All right, so that's going to take us to another special presentation, which is SB 1383, and this is for Richard Nino.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Staff, and ladies and gentlemen of the public. My name is Richard Nino with Eau Quaypa Disposal, and I'm here this evening to share with you a new piece of legislation that we will all be burdened with, and that is, I think, the appropriate word, because you'll see through the course of my presentation that it is rather robust. This evening, I'm going to attempt to summarize 127-page regulatory piece of legislation related to Senate Bill 1383, the Short-Lived Climate Pollutants Initiative here in California. First and foremost, what is 1383? What is it intended to do? Well, it all stems from the state's efforts to improve air quality and reduce methane gas emissions, as well as trying to procure or obtain some of that food, which would otherwise go to the landfill and redirect it to people that may be hungry. The information that I will be sharing with you today is information that has been provided by CalRecycle as they've initiated several studies over the years, as well as significant stakeholder input throughout the state. As far as food insecurity, there are essentially millions of tons of organic waste going into the landfill, six million tons of which has been identified as food waste, and a big portion of that edible food. So as part of the legislation, it was determined to require that an edible food recovery component be added to the program, so that edible food that would otherwise be thrown away or discarded and end up in the landfill could be captured and directed to agencies that could help redistribute that food. The other major component or reason for 1383 is air quality. Methane gas was identified as being one of the largest and most significant emissions from landfills, methane gas coming from organic material decomposing at the landfills. The same gas that has been identified as being 72 times more potent than carbon dioxide over a 20-year life, 20-year period. CalRecycle put forth several issues related to air quality and air quality pollutants, including climate change resulting in droughts, wildfires, rising sea levels, and other challenges. The goal of 1383 are, there are several. One, to reduce the amount of organic waste by 75% or 20 million tons per year going to California's landfills. That is the equivalent of about 2 million trucks of solid waste going to landfills. That's a lot of material. Secondly, recover 20% of edible food and redirect that food by 2025, with all of the legislation effective January 1st of 2022. What that means is the commencement and implementation of organic waste collection systems, edible food recovery program, and as I'd mentioned at the beginning of my comments, this is a sizable piece of legislation and the most impactful to the industry in the last 30 years. I wanted to take pause to share with you some of the information that we've garnered as we've launched pilot residential food waste recovery programs. We essentially provided the programs to 1,000 homes in two adjacent cities to our material recovery facility in Fontana, so that we can determine and learn from that exercise some of the challenges that we might have in the recovery of food waste from the residential sector, the same sector that utilizes barrel services for the collection of their solid waste, green waste, and recyclables like you have here in the city of Eau Quaypa. When we launched that program and after several weeks of study at the 1,000 homes in each of the respective cities, we were recovering approximately just shy of four ounces of food waste per home per week. That's a little less than the weight of an apple. You know, our, we hope that that is not an indicator of things to come when we launch as a state these programs statewide, that we hope to recover more than that amount in order to make those programs effective. I provide this to you to illustrate the extent of the challenges that we have, and also to share with you how impactful it is, not only as a city or as an industry, but also to the homeowner or residents in all cities throughout the state. This next slide depicts the main components of the legislation, and I'm going to highlight some of those within each of the various themes. Organic collection services, providing programs where we could recover green waste, food waste, wood waste, manure, and other paper products. Many of those, of the programs we currently have in place will help with that effort, but this law will require an expansion to not only single-family homes and residential food waste collection, but also residential food waste collection at multifamily complexes. The containers that are to be provided under the program are to be color-specific, as approved and dictated by the regulation. Fortunately, most of the containers that we have here in Eau Quaypa are compliant, so we won't have too many challenges with that effort, but we'll still have some work ahead of us. In addition, there are specific container labeling requirements. The containers must be labeled with certain images and certain language, as dictated by the law. Waste audits. Once the programs are in place and we're collecting the materials, we must monitor and assure that, in fact, all generators are utilizing the containers. If they are not participating in the program, then we're obligated to make city staff aware, and subsequent enforcement action must be implemented. And that is a specific requirement of the legislation as well. Contamination minimization. What does that mean? Well, that means making sure that those individuals that are participating in the program are doing it correctly. There are specific provisions delineated in the specification where we are to audit the loads of trash, organics, and recycling to measure the effectiveness of the program and the participants. So we'll have some work to do there as well. Edible food recovery capacity. I mentioned that earlier in the presentation. One of the first things that it calls for is identifying the larger generators, like grocery stores, markets, and larger restaurants, identifying what efforts they already have, quantifying those recovery or recycling efforts, and expanding the programs to those that are not otherwise participating in a food recovery or food recycling program. It is also incumbent upon the city, in partnership with its haulers, to identify the existence of the existing food recovery organizations and identify how much capacity they currently have and how much volume they can handle in edible food recovery, collection, and redistribution. It is our goal to assist the city with those efforts as well. Procurement of recycled organic waste. Well, in order to promote and develop markets for the recycled food waste that would be collected and presumably converted into compost or energy, the state has required all cities to procure certain volumes of organic material. If we were simply to look at compost as a solution for Eau Quaypa, and it's simply to serve as an illustration, then the city of Eau Quaypa would need to purchase or cause to be purchased approximately 4,300 tons of compost per year. That's a lot of compost, certainly more than all of the public parks could use, and potentially even all the homes or residences. Part of the requirement is to consider the purchase of renewable natural gas, which can be used for transportation fleets or to create power. In addition to that, it would require the city to track all of its recycled paper purchases, track it, monitor it, and buy invoice, invoice date, et cetera. Waivers. Another element of the program where the city would be allowed to grant waivers under certain specific conditions that must be documented and verifiable. Record-keeping and reporting. That is, to say the least, one of the, another big challenge, where the program implementation, as well as ongoing tracking, monitoring of all elements that are delineated in this slide, must be documented and readily available to the state regulators within a short timeframe that is specified in the reg. Education and outreach. Every year, all businesses and residents must be made aware of the requirements, including the program, why it exists, the success of the program, and what may happen if you are identified as a non-participant or a bad actor in the program. Identifying edible food generators, we already spoke about that item. And lastly, inspection ordinances and enforcement. The state requires the city to adopt a series of ordinances, numerous ordinances, including issues related to the C and D program, or Construction and Demolition Recycling Program. Fortunately, the city already has that in place and is implementing it effectively. Ordinances to address contamination or lack of participation, with penalties identified on the low end of $50 for the first occurrence, up to $500 per day. Next slide, please. I mentioned some of the requirements, including construction and demolition recycling. Also, the regulation requires the implementation and potential update of a model water-efficient landscape ordinance. And what's most interesting is the information in the middle of the slide. So while the state has been on this path and on this track to divert and recycle organics for several years, not only under this regulation, but prior regulations, including Assembly Bill 1826, which requires commercial organics recycling for food waste and green waste. About five years ago, the state determined that the state, we needed approximately 50 to 100 new facilities in the state. That's about five years ago. And since that time, I believe, the state has permitted and built no more than 15 of said facilities. So we still have a long ways to go, and even so, the regulation remains intact with an implementation date of January 1st, 2022. When the regulators first drafted the bill and sought input from stakeholders in other cities throughout the state, at no time did anybody even ponder the possibilities of a global pandemic, let alone the impacts that we've had here at the, in the state level and our local level. We've been working with city staff to help support draft legislation in Sacramento to help delay this initiative, and it's our hope that the state does review and take pause to delay the implementation of this bill. Nevertheless, we are charged, as a city's franchise hauler, to provide key points that need to be met and support the city in its efforts to implement these programs, and rest assured that we are committed to doing just that and trying to find the most economical, feasible, practical way to implement these measures with as much time allowance that the state would give without putting the city's compliance program into jeopardy. With that, I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
So are there any questions for Richard?
Do you think this whole effort is going to raise the normal collection rates for our residents as this thing goes forward?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first.
Do you think this program, this SB 1383, is going to increase the cost of just regular trash pickup for the residents of Eau Quaypa?
Yes, sir, it will. It will. And that, and that would be because of the collection of food waste and the additional processing to separate it and then process it accordingly. We estimate that the monthly fee would increase anywhere from $2 to $3 a month for residents. Within the statute, Sacramento did a good job of pointing out that cities or jurisdictions have the ability to raise fees to implement any portions of the program that it so deems as necessary, which I thought was very helpful of the state to do that, which is somewhat of the obvious, but they do point that out in the regulation.
Justin, do you have anything? David?
No.
John? Great presentation. One quick question. I know there's a proposal to delay this another couple of years. If it is delayed, will you have a hard time still to implement all these laws? Or that gives you some leeway to implement?
I think the proposed legislation to delay will afford all entities and all stakeholders in the state adequate time to prepare for it. But even if there is a two-year delay, in order to construct and develop the needed infrastructure, like the compost facilities or anaerobic digestion facilities, it takes more than two years to do just that. So it'll help, but it will not be the tell-all solution, if you will.
Okay. Thanks, Richard.
Thank you very much.
Maybe I do have a real fast question. Richard, can we get a copy of your presentation?
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you. Never mind.
All right, so that's going to take us to an employee introduction. I'm not sure who's, Ben, are you handling this?
Mr. Matlock is.
All right, come on down, Ben.
It is with great pleasure to introduce Maria Coolhaven to our city's code enforcement team. She is our office assistant, providing the administrative support for our code enforcement personnel that is out in the field. Kind of a background from her. She joined City of Eau Quaypa in November of 2020, following experience with the City of Redlands Fire Department in providing support for their functions. Actually, kind of a fun fact is, I had, when I worked at City of Redlands, Maria was there as well, and she was a very positive personality, very helpful in those divisions, and certainly that skill set and trait has carried through in our department. And so we've been very thrilled to have her as part of our team. Kind of unique things, I guess, with her. She's been married to 21 years, she has two sons, and she's a very active person. She had noted that she climbed Mount Whitney in a day a couple of years ago, and likes to participate in, I guess, a Mojave death race. And so you'll usually see her walking around during lunch break and doing the bid loop around Chapman Heights and gets it done. I mean, it's very cool, and we're very glad to have her as part of our code enforcement team. And yeah, she's been very helpful, and we're excited to have her.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, executive staff here tonight. I'd just like to give everybody, you know, a thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here. Each and every staff member has been very welcoming and very professional, and it's made my transition just really easy. And so I look forward to serving the community of the city of Eau Quaypa.
All right, welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. And we are going to come down and have our picture taken with you.
Okay.
Do you have any family members or any?
No.
Okay. Okay, so that's going to take us to public comment. I have a number of speaker slips here. I'm going to start off with Bill, Bill McEwen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Bill McEwen, 12361 Fourth Street.
You're still good. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm here to speak about streetlights. It's an issue of public safety that we have well-lighted streets, you know, in the evenings. And we have a number of Edison lights throughout the community. They're attached to the telephone poles. You've probably seen them. They look pretty old. There's a program that Edison is running that, where they go out and they replace those streetlights with LED lighting, which is, you get much better illumination for less money. So it's a really good program, and there's a number of cities that have already done it. I don't know where the city of Eau Quaypa stands with it, but it'd be a really good thing for public safety to get those lights changed out, possibly even add new lights where it might not be illuminated enough. It's just, it really helps at night when we can see, you know, streets and the sidewalks and that sort of thing. So I'd like to encourage the city to expedite the program. I guess it's in the works or something. I didn't quite follow entirely what's going on. It's a little bit complicated because there are different types of lighting. There's the green streetlights uptown that we're responsible for, and there's also the lights on the signals that we're responsible for. The lights I'm talking about are the lights on the telephone poles. There's apparently like 1,100 of them. But there's a number of cities that have already gone to it, and they're saving money. And they're getting better illumination at night and improvements in public safety. So I hope maybe the mayor, if you could write a letter over your signature inquiry, whatever, see if we can expedite that process and get those lights changed out. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. I know we've been working on that over the years. We've actually implemented that in, I can't even tell you how many different streets in the city, but it is definitely a cost savings. But thank you. All right, I have one that says, concerned Eau Quaypa citizen. All right, I have one that says concerned Ucaipa citizen.
Good evening, gentlemen. Mayor Bo, members of the council. It is my understanding that the council will be meeting tonight in a closed session with the city attorney to discuss council being exposed to potential litigation. It is also my understanding that documents related to this potential litigation are available to view in the city clerk's office. My question for you is, how is anyone reasonably supposed to view these documents? The board agenda was not available until after 5:00 on Thursday. City Hall was closed on Friday, and Odyssey Saturday and Sunday. On Monday, children are in school, people work. So how is this information to be accessed? People need time to make informational replies as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that on electronic file?
Yeah, the information, the agenda information is all available in our website. It's accessible there, and of course, available at City Hall when we're open on Monday morning, but it's available Thursday afternoon, Thursday evening on the website.
Okay. Well, we'll look into that, though. Thank you. I have one that says a Ucaipa concerned resident.
Good evening, gentlemen. Mayor Bo, members of the council. I would like to request that the city council address the meeting which has taken place earlier this month between Representative Obernolte and council members, which was announced by Representative Obernolte on Twitter, April 7th, with a photo of himself with council members, and the message, quote, "It was great to meet with Ucaipa Mayor Greg Bo and speak with several council members to discuss priorities in our community. I look forward to continuing to work with our local elected officials to ensure our district's needs are met." Mayor Bo and several council members? The photo appears to include Mayor Bo in addition to two more council members, which would indicate the presence of a quorum. This would be a violation of the Brown Act, specifically the conduct of local government officials without an open and public meeting, and the serial meeting rule where three or more council members are discussing government business without the remaining council members present. So my questions for you regarding this meeting are as follows. Which council members were present at this meeting, and are there written minutes and/or recordings to confirm what was discussed? Thank you.
If I may respond, Mr. Mayor, there were several meetings that day with a picture taken in between the meetings or around the meetings. That was just a picture. Two council members in the first meeting, one council member in the second meeting, and social interaction in between, I guess, that included the picture. But at no time were topics that could potentially be on the agenda discussed with three council members present.
That is true. I was at the meeting, and I was with one other council member, and then we met with another council member after, so that's fine. All right, so I have an A. Kelly.
Good evening, gentlemen. I know you're going to be disappointed to know that this is my last meeting I'll be attending in Ucaipa. I'm moving back to the East Coast to take over my cousin's shellfishing business. I'm 70 years old. I haven't done it since I was 25, but I think it will be a little bit more fun. The only thing I want to address the city council, I'm very disappointed that four years ago Bobby Duncan contacted me about the toxic leaking dump killing people, and then he stonewalled me, as did everybody on the city council and everybody in the life of the city. So I guess you'll have to deal with it. You probably won't. The big thing I want to address, especially the two new gentlemen on the city council, four years ago, the Buddhist temple that I reside at most of the time, Kuanam, had their land seized, part of their land, by the city council. We still pay taxes on it, it's still on the tax assessor role, and it was given to a developer who then opened it up as a massage parlor. After two years in code enforcement, trying to do everything they could, because that's not what was going on there, we finally got, the Department of Homeland Security came in and the local sheriffs, and they raided them, arrested a few people, and it's been closed since then, but we still don't have our land. Again, it's on the tax assessor role, and that's why I'm passionate about this. You stole property from a Buddhist monastery, and then we had to listen to Mr. Duncan's comments about, there's something else here, there's something else here. He's insulted every religion, every ethnicity. I hope that you guys can do something about it. You need to get an ethics committee. See, little Bobby loves to smile. Thank you, and au revoir.
All right, so that's going to, that's going to take us to the consent agenda.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, staff would respectfully request, number one, that item number five be discussed as a department report in an effort to allow a council member to recuse himself from a part of that item. And if it's timely, I would also ask that the city council approve adding an urgency item to the agenda. Our pump went out in our pool, Seven Street Pool, and received the information relative to the bids after the posting of the agenda, and with the schedule coming up for the pool, can't wait for another council meeting for it to meet our obligations with our partners. And so the information came in after the agenda was posted, and it's, there's a need to act on this item prior to the next council meeting. So we respectfully request that we add that as a department report and move number five to a department report to allow that item to be bifurcated and voted on separately. The element that would have to be voted on separately is the Phase 1 budget element with the Phase 2 approval being a separate discussion and vote.
All right, so do you need an action to add the pool pump item?
Please, and that would require a four-fifths vote to add this evening as an urgency item.
Okay, you guys okay with adding the one item, the emergency item for a pool pump?
Yes.
Yes.
That's a little, take a, do you want to, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, so first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. So we're going to, we're going to modify the consent agenda by removing item number five. That way, one of the council members can recuse himself. So is there a motion to accept one, two, three, four, six, and seven?
I motion those items be moved.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so should we take item number five right now, Ray?
I just have a very brief update on legislation. If you like to come in.
Just have a very brief update on legislation. I could do that after item five, if you like.
Well, let's, yeah, let's do that after mayor. Sorry, I'm jumping the gun here. So let's start with mayor and council business, mayor and council member business. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add?
No.
That's good.
San Bernardino County Transportation Agency with OmniTrans received an 85.75, I believe, million-dollar grant from the federal government, the Federal Transportation Agency, which is the largest award given out out of the four recipients nationwide. And with that, the, the project, I can't, West Valley, the West Valley Connectors, which will be about $85 million, will begin, and if it's not already in progress, and which will help with traffic control or traffic circulation issues associated with the West End, and it does benefit OmniTrans, which will in turn, to some extent, benefit Ucaipa in terms of what we're going to get in terms of future buses. As you know, we're heading towards electrification, and all of this money that we receive will all contribute to moving us towards electrification and carbon-free public transportation. And it's kind of a big deal for San Bernardino County. Well, they're not a big impact on Ucaipa, but it's a big deal for overall San Bernardino County, and that's it.
All right. Thanks for the information. John, do you have anything?
No.
No? Okay. Possible action on pending legislation?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, one quick announcement that Mayor Protem Duncan may want to chime in on is the raised plant repotting effort this weekend. It was a successful effort led by Steve Franken, our landscape architect, and the Duncan family was there, and others, Casey's, others.
So my wife, my wife always tries to participate in that, and she, last year, got the Golden Trial Award, and so on Saturday, was it Friday?
Friday and Saturday.
Friday, everyone showed up at about 8:00 and worked till about noon or 1:00 and potted, went ahead and repotted about 110 or 190?
190 all total.
Altogether, but then we had to come back on Saturday, then I got to participate on Saturday, but that's a community effort, saves the city money, and everyone that goes and participates has a good time, and my wife thoroughly enjoys it, but she does come back tired.
So the next item under legislation, if I may, is an item that we talked about bringing back for a letter against SB 82, a direction we received. Happy to do that next meeting, but we reached out to League of Cities, and the current status is it went through committee and it was placed on appropriations suspense, and League of Cities didn't think it was going to go any further than that, once it's played on, placed on appropriations suspense. So happy to bring that back just in case, but their recommendation was it's not likely to go any further than that.
That's good news. All right. So let's go to department reports, and we're going to start with item number five. Is that okay?
And if we're going to go with Phase 1 first, I must recuse myself because I am that council member, so I'll step aside.
All right, is this for me?
Yes, good evening, mayor and council members. This item is regarding a notice of grant and agreement award from the National Resources Conservation Service. After the El Dorado fire of last year, staff worked with NRCS staff to seek funding for, to complete some post-fire mitigation efforts, or what the NRCS considers emergency watershed protection measures within the burn area and downstream of the burn area. The proposed work is to be completed in two phases. The Phase 1 work was completed last year, and due to the fairly light rain season to date, the Phase 1 measures were very effective, and we did see some very small minor debris and mud flows in the area. For Phase 2, staff is proposing a more permanent measure, or at least what NRCS considers a more permanent measure, and that is a debris basin on Wilson Creek at Jefferson Street. For Phase 2, the agreement, or for, again, the work is supposed to be completed in phases, so the recommendation before you tonight is to amend the fiscal year 2020, 2021 capital improvement program by adding the additional funding, the financial assistance funding from NRCS to the El Dorado fire storm season preparation project, and that's in the amount of $497,993.75, and authorize the city manager or is designated to work with NRCS to make minor adjustments to the project or to the agreement, and authorize the city manager or is designated to administer the terms of the agreement. That concludes my report, and staff is available for questions.
All right, so are there any questions for staff?
Other question, so this NRCS, is that the same organization that's building a facility up there off of Bryant? No, different organization?
No, that's an agreement that we had. It's expired, we need to bring it back to you, but that agreement is with Inland Empire Resource Conservation.
I see, I missed that, okay. And what is this funding going to be used for, as far as preparation in case there's a watershed problem or flooding?
It's for a project to mitigate potential flooding from the burn area, to build a basin.
So just to be clear, the Phase 1 action this evening is to basically approve the grant funding, and Phase 1 has been completed. Phase 1 is in closer proximity to Councilmember Avila's residence. Phase 2 is to be completed in the future. We received tentative approval for grant funding for that, and we prefer to talk a little bit more detail about that with Councilmember Avila back in the room. But Phase 1, what we seek from you this evening is authorization for the grant funding that includes Phase 1 and, of course, Phase 2, but Phase 1 for this, for this part of the conversation.
So right now, we need a motion for Phase 1. Is that how I understand it?
And is that item 1?
Yeah. It's recommendation number 2. The project's completed, but it's the funding authorization for the grant that is to be amended in the CIP. So the CIP needs to be amended to include the grant funding for both Phase 1 and Phase 2. You approved local match funding previously, and in order to bifurcate the item, we're recommending that you approve the change to the CIP associated with Phase 1, and then approve the rest of it with David Avila in the room.
Okay, so the capital improvement program, which includes Phase 1, which is item number 2?
Correct.
So is there a most, we have a motion to accept item number 2?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. I'll second, sorry. We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, now we... Ray, when we went through this process with the whole El Dorado fire and all the changes that we had to make, was that required to go through the SEQA process to get those changes finished?
You're talking about the field mitigation?
Yeah, I just, I know that there's a bill out there to exempt fire areas, fire damaged areas, from the SEQA process, that it doesn't seem to get traction, but I didn't realize that we actually had to go through SEQA to mitigate fire.
Yeah, to the extent that it's characterized as maintenance of facilities, even if those facilities aren't accepted, that would be exempt from SEQA. This Phase 2 element is a little more substantive, so that's a good question, whether, I think there is a SEQA process that we need to go through for this Phase 2 element.
Okay. All right, so we did vote on item number 2. Do we need any further discussion or any more information for the other items?
Yeah, I think the part that for me started to explain, we should explain again with Councilmember Avila in the room.
Thank you. So with the Phase 1 work completed, what is being proposed for Phase 2 is a more permanent mitigation measure along Wilson Creek, and that is a debris basin or detention basin on Wilson Creek just upstream of Jefferson Street. According to the agreement, this work has to be completed within 220 days. We've already started the process of working with NRCS and trying to meet some of the requirements that they have for the work. So the recommendation before you tonight is to formally approve the notice of grant and agreement award between NRCS and the City of Ucaipa for the emergency watershed protection measures Phase 2 in the amount of $254,775 for the permanent relieving of hazards created by the natural disaster created by the El Dorado fire. That concludes my report.
All right.
I'm sorry, and also recommendations three and four to authorize the city manager or is designated to work with NRCS to make minor adjustments to the agreement, provided that if any significant changes are made, the agreement will be brought back to city council for consideration and authorize the city manager or is designated to administer the terms of the agreement.
All right, so are there any questions in regards to items one, three, and four? If not, is there a motion to accept?
I'm of approval.
A second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so moving right along. That's going to take us to item number eight. And I believe this is...
Mr. Mayor, would you want to take the urgency item first, or go ahead with?
Which one?
The urgency item is the pool?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry. Let's take the urgency.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The Community Services Department and Public Works Department is working hard to get the pool ready for the 2021 summer season. Sand Canyon Water Polo Club was scheduled to start at the pool on April 5th. Unfortunately, the pool pump would not turn on. Horizon Mechanical came out to inspect the pump to see if we can make some repairs. However, since the pump was installed in 2002 and a total of 12 repairs had already been made, there was nothing that we could do. So staff contacted pool, commercial pool companies to request a quote to purchase a new pump and install that at the pool, and the information was received after the printing of this agenda. This evening, city staff is asking for council to waive the formal selection of proposals, qualifications in accordance with the City of Yucaipa Municipal Code Section 2.24.060 and Ordinance Number 42, and approve the purchase orders for the required pool pump equipment repairs at Seventh Street Pool Facility, and approve and authorize the city manager to execute a purchase order for the purchase of the pool pump equipment for the Seventh Street Pool from NOR Systems in the amount of $8,220.25, and approve and authorize the city manager to execute a purchase order for the installation of the pool equipment for the Seventh Street Pool Facility with Horizon Mechanical Contractors in the amount of $17,272.48. The total estimated cost for the proposed work is in the amount of $25,492.73. Funding in this same amount is available in the fiscal year 2020, 2021 Parks Capital Replacement Fund. As a result, there is significant, I mean sufficient, funding available to accommodate staff's requests. This concludes my report, and I can answer any questions that you may have at this time.
All right, so are there any questions for staff?
There were two people who responded. One was NOR, and the other was like Lincoln Aquatics?
Lincoln Aquatics, correct.
And they were less expensive than NOR?
Yes, Lincoln Aquatics pump that they're recommending is plastic, which is fine, but the pump that's being recommended by NOR is copper. And when we researched the pumps, the copper pump will last longer and is a better retrofit for our pool. The current pump that we have right now is, I think, steel? And our exact pump is in stock, isn't available on the shelves, and so these two were recommended from both companies.
Okay, and Horizon Mechanical Contractors and NOR competed for the installation, and it says here that HMC was less expensive than NOR?
Correct, so Horizon Mechanical is the contractor that NOR contracts with to put the equipment in, as well as Lincoln Aquatics. Lincoln just didn't provide the information back before this meeting, and Horizon Mechanical also provided a quote for us directly. Fun fact, they also installed the original pump in 2002.
HMC did?
Yes.
All right.
All right, any further questions, comments, motions?
I think the pool is a staple for the community. I spent a lot of time in the plunge as a child, so I think it's important we keep that up and running, so let's get it up as fast as we can. I motion that we move it forward.
All right, so the motion?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. So now that takes us to item number eight. And I believe this is Jennifer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to also add that Amy Grayson is on the phone and is also here to address any questions that you may have after the presentation of this report. Before you again is the Mobile Home Rent Review Commission process. As detailed in the background section of the report, City Council has been analyzing this process now for several years. It has been difficult to find, fill, and maintain the five positions of qualified candidates that could understand not only the complexity of the documents associated with the special rent adjustment, but literally going through the extensive hearing process that we are now involved in, which includes experts, attorneys from all three sides, the residents, the park owner, and the city. After the appointed commission goes through their initial training, they only meet to review the ordinance and rules through the biennial review process and when a special rent adjustment application or appeal of a capital improvement is submitted. At this time, only two people have been appointed to the commission to date, and one additional application has been received, which is also before you this evening. Pursuant to the administrative rules, three affirmative votes are required for a final decision. If only three members on the commission are serving on the five-member commission, and they cannot come to a unanimous decision, the application would be denied and most likely would be appealed to council. This would increase the costs associated with the overall process, and it would likely have a financial impact on the residents of the parks. In addition, if an application is received tomorrow, I have 30 days, if the application is complete, to deem it complete, and the hearings set before the commission has to fall within 60 days. So the timing is quite tight if I don't have a full commission or at least four commissioners on the Mobile Home Rent Review Commission. In the response to the vacancies and due to these reoccurring issues that have been brought before council back in 2011 and 2019, we are reintroducing this item for your consideration. On page 117 of the packet lists the options that have been presented in council in 2011 and 19, and the pros and cons of the options start on page 126 of this packet. In addition, we did reach out to a few other cities to find out if they have any innovative ways that they are looking at, some new ideas that came out. One city is looking at potentially having their planning commissioners serve as the Mobile Home Rent Review Commission, and another is they are providing compensation for their council members who serve as the commission. If it is your direction to change the current process, which is appointing five members to the commission, staff would return with revisions to the ordinance rules and all appropriate forms if you direct us to make this change. That's all I have, other than the recommendation is that you review some options that are presented before you and/or consider the appointment of John Chu to the Mobile Home Rent Review Commission. That would give us three, and then we would need two more if possible.
Okay, I do have a speaker slip, so I'm going to call up the speaker first, Shirley Dalton from YMRA.
Good evening, Mayor Boggs, council members.
Shirley, can you pull the microphone up? There you go.
Got better?
Yep.
Okay. I am speaking tonight because I have reviewed the recommendations that are in your packet. At this time, YMRA would support option five, which is to continue the process as it currently exists, which means the commission would hold evidentiary hearings and issue a decision with appeal to the city council. If the council decides a change needs to be made, for whatever reason, including the difficulty of filling the commission seats, we do not support the use of a hearing officer. This would likely result in a substantial increase in cost to the residents, excuse me, I'm a little out of breath, of the park involved.
Yeah, you can take off the mask.
Thank you. This would likely result in a substantial increase in cost to the residents of any park involved in this decision. In my opinion, no benefit would accrue to mobile home park residents to justify the increased cost. YMRA has in the past, as far back as 2011, supported option number one, with the city council holding hearings and issuing a final decision with no appeal. This decision could, of course, be challenged in court. At this time, we would support option number one if it is decided not to continue the current process. Thank you. You have any questions?
Thank you, Shirley. Thank you. All right, so we have two items before us, is review the Mobile Home Rent Commission process and provide direction. We've been doing this, going through this for years. And then appoint, we have John Chu, who is appointed for, or is recommended.
Yeah, so if you're choosing, if you give staff the direction tonight to keep the commission, then the recommendation would be that you appoint Mr. Chu. If the recommendation is that you review the options, if you choose a different option and go away from using a commission or have a different body become the commission, then obviously you wouldn't then appoint Mr. Chu.
Right, okay.
How many do we have right now on the commission?
You have two appointed to date.
Two? We need five.
Yes. It'd be great to have five, in case someone can't make a hearing. We've had that happen a couple of times. I would take four. Three's difficult because all three would have to unanimously agree, and we've, through all our commission hearings, have had difficulty getting that. So what we don't want, and of course, we're bringing this before you and have several other times, the last thing we want is to create additional costs on the residents particular, you know, no one wants to do that. So we've been trying to figure out ways to streamline the process because if an application is approved, then the cost of putting that application is borne by the residents. So if it goes to the commission and they can't make a decision, or they don't understand necessarily the full process, which then it makes it a little difficult for Amy because on the dais, they have to come up with the reasons stated justifying what they're allocating to the applicant. It makes it very difficult, and it could be appealed. So any delay in that just increases the cost, which then is borne typically by the residents if the application is approved. So we've had 10, I'm sorry, we've had 10 special rent applications come before commissions over the years, and five of those have been appealed, of which two of the council decisions were appealed by court and remanded back to the city. So it's not an easy topic, I realize.
Well, I've brought it up over the years, many years, I've brought it up many times. I said I don't necessarily have the solution, but I can tell you that it doesn't work. I don't, I can't tell you whether it's, that's been my position all along, and it's because I try to get people to join this commission, and they don't want to be my friends anymore. It's a tough one. You kind of become the bad guy, no matter what you do. So I can't get anyone to fill my appointment currently, and I don't know if, so if you guys have a different option or a different proposal? If I could get someone, if people were jumping, you know, asking to be part of it, and I would sign them right up, and I would continue on with the current process, but that's not what's happening, so we need, I think there needs to be some kind of change.
So who's on there now? Who's on the rent control commission and the recommission now? Brandy Gomez, I know is on there, and that's a good choice.
Councilmember Avila appointed Brandy Gomez, and Mayor Protam Duncan appointed William Regan.
And that's all we got, just those two?
Just those two.
Why do you think it's so difficult? I mean, I ask, I ask a lot of people, a lot of times, to serve on that commission, and we can't seem to keep anybody on there. I agree with what Mayor Boggs said. Why do you think that is the case?
I think it's a combination of, it's the ordinance and rules and court rulings make the mobile home rent control and the fair return and the maintenance of fair return very complex, is one of the items. The second item in the hearing, literally the stack in the most recent case, the binder was this thick of the supporting documentation needed and reviewed by the experts. We then have a fair return expert that the hearing, you know, the commission hears testimony from, we have appraisers, and then they're just sitting up there and they're listening to eight, nine hours of testimony and maybe additional days, and it's, and we even have a court recorder. It's almost like being a jury or judge with, you know.
And what would the cost be? I know we have talked about having a retired judge hear the case or hear the testimony and then render a judgment. What would that actually, would that cost a lot for the, I mean, you mentioned, you're always mentioning the fact that when they lose, they have to pay more, and it's not good for the residents if they lose an appeal, or they, what would it cost to have a retired judge actually hear the case and render a judgment?
I don't think we have updated costs, but when we were looking at that in 2011, I think the range was roughly $400 to $1,000 per hour for a judge or an attorney. One of the cons, as stated back in 2011, and it's probably still the same, is when you hand it over to a hearing officer, if it's an attorney or a retired judge, they take full control of the process, and Amy can step in on this, but they, you kind of hand over the control, and since they are judge and attorney, typically what their findings are, hold if further appealed.
Okay, so has any other council member had any thought or ideas?
Yeah, I don't want council to assume that responsibility, just being reminded of the homework one has to do. We have enough on our plate, I certainly have enough on my plate, that to add another thousand pages and hours and hours of listening to testimonies, that's just, that's beyond my abilities, so.
How about Planning Commission?
Dump it on them.
You might see a mass exodus there.
You might have another problem.
You know, I've gone to several, I mean, I've attended a lot of YMRA meetings, and I've encouraged YMRA to find some folks that qualify to be on the commission, and I have never gotten a response from them of anybody that they've recommended, that, I mean, just trying to find somebody to sit in that chair and listen and render a judgment is really challenging, and I think we've... And I think we've kind of run out. I mean, honestly, I've run out of options trying to find people and...
Well, the YMRA is tough because they're all mobile home rent, they're all in mobile home parks and they're not supposed to be.
But they know other people that don't live in parks.
That's true.
They know people that are...
Yeah.
I've made attempts to, staff that retire from here or council members that leave, I asked them and...
They laugh?
Yes. Yeah, they said, "No, thank you. Thank you, but no, thank you." So it is, it is difficult and we do recognize that. One of the goals, and in 2019, the staff did make a recommendation that the council serves as the hearing body and then have no appeal. You are, you're used to meeting, you're used to holding hearings. The process can definitely be more streamlined. You know, so we do see benefits, obviously, as staff to have the council serve as the hearing body. And I do understand that you have a lot on your plate as a council now. And that was one of the options that in other communities, they do pay their council an extra stipend. Some cases don't come along and that, those are the best years. Sometimes we don't have a case for a couple of years and nothing happens. And then, but when we do have a case, it can take some time.
It could take 15 hours, two days.
I will say this, the last one was more streamlined. Jennifer is absolutely right. Some things have been changed in the last year or so that have made the hearings a little more streamlined. I don't know if you want to talk to that a little bit, but I think they're more streamlined today than they were several years ago.
Yeah, I'm amazed that nobody wants to do it. I've talked, I said, I've tried for the eight years trying to get somebody to, you know, different times, trying to get them to appoint, to appoint somebody to that, to the commission, and nobody wants it. And once they get it for one meeting, they dump. They get out of there and it's like, it's frustrating.
I know Shirley was opposed to, and YMRA seems to be opposed to, the hearing officer due to cost, but unless the council is going to do that, I don't see any other option at this point.
I'm not opposed to the council doing it. I mean, I'm not opposed to that as an option.
Ms. Grayson offered an alternative, and I didn't quite catch all of that. Amy, could you repeat that? The options, instead of using a retired judge or attorney, an attorney? You said there was another group that could do something like that?
Well, Jama is, Jama.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I would add to that is I think it is helpful when you've got two sides and there's a pool and the two sides can narrow down to the kind of last person standing. So there's some fairness in that. If you were to go the RFP process, as Amy suggested, you'd end up with kind of the person and that would be the end of that decision. There's also a fair hearing, due process issue with that, in that if there's an expectation that that person's going to continue to get work, there could be a bias. So there has to be, you wouldn't be able to necessarily use that same person time and again either. So that's just something to think about as well.
And really and truly, this is the most difficult job that we have as a city council as we talk about rent control for mobile homes. I've spent a lot of time with these folks and some of these folks just genuinely can't afford more rent. And it's sad and it's disheartening to me to have to deal with it, but we want to make sure that whatever we come up with is fair for both sides, for the property owners and also for the folks that are renting those spaces. We've got to make sure that we don't rent them out of a place to live. That's so important. And that's such a big part of our housing element, our affordable housing element, too. It's a big decision.
It is, and it has to be neutral. And the two times that the council held up the commission ruling of zero, the courts came back and required the city to rehear. So it is, we all recognize the burden of the residents, but park owner, mobile home park is a business and they're entitled to a fair return.
Have you spoke with the planning commissioners yet in regards to this?
No.
No, they didn't?
I, no, I have not reached out to them. That would, no, I have not.
I mean, I think we could propose it to them if they were interested.
Would it be, would it have to be a permanent commissioner? Or can it be a rotating spot for a planning commissioner? You did it this time, somebody, another commissioner on the planning commissioner can do it next time. That way it's not, it's such a burden.
It would be a full commission.
Oh, it would be the full commission. It would have to be a body because they're not attorneys.
I'm sorry, let me rephrase. Is there a way that we could sub in two planning commissioners to take over the two vacant spots and fill them into our two vacant positions that we currently have? If we approve the applicant this evening? That way...
So what, just so that I'm clarified, you know, I understand. We're talking about the planning commissioner who reviews, design review. They will take on an extra ability to serve as rent control administrators or commissioners?
Yeah, but in 2020, and we could change this, council changed the process from an at-large appointment to council member appointment. So each of you would appoint an individual to serve on the commission, no different than how you appoint people to a planning commission.
I would...
But if I...
Can I, can I throw a quick proposal? I don't mind if we throw it out to them. It's a 50/50, but I think we should add compensation. If they have to sit through it, then I don't mind a small stipend that they take on the extra... They're offering it to council, why not offer it to the planning commissioner? Is that possible?
Then all of a sudden, we won't have anybody on the planning commission.
Well, if you gave them a stipend for sitting through it. I don't know, just an idea, just an idea.
Just to give you an idea, Valley View obviously took place in 2019. The one before that was North View, which the residents there did a meet and confer, so I didn't even have to go to the commission. And then we had Carriage Trade in 2017, Ukaypa Village 2011. So it's not like they're coming all the time. There is gaps in there. We even had a commission that served their two years and never really, they came to a training and that was it for the two years. So it's not a guarantee that they'll come every year, but like Amy said, knock on wood.
So if I may, Mr. Mayor, there's three things that I'm hearing that council may want to give us direction on, and we can certainly come back to you. One is whether there's a stipend involved for, whether it's a planning commissioner or maybe all the members of the Mobile Home Rent Control Commission. Another is perhaps one or two of the planning commissioners would be appointed to the Rent Control Commission together with the other folks. And again, we would have to come back to you with changes to that enabling document. And then three, whether or not the entire planning commission would act as the Rent Control Commission and be able to receive a stipend. I think we have to do a little research on the stipend part and we can come back to you with any of those options if you so choose.
Right. If I may ask, when you said the other folks, do you mean the citizens that are on the Rent Stabilization Commission now? And then a couple of either electeds or planning commissioners, like a hybrid thing?
Correct.
That's what I was thinking, if that was possible, to do something like that. That way Mayor Pro Tem Duncan would like to be on it. And I'm assuming. And maybe another council member. Well, you kind of said that when you said, "Yeah, I don't mind being on it," you know, for the council taking it.
I didn't mind us.
Yeah.
The only reason I would lean towards the planning commission is it kind of takes a little bit of the politics out of it because they are appointed, so. But I'm open to any idea at this point, so.
Just to clarify, if there's an appellate function of the city council, then it could be problematic to have city council members serve also on that commission. But because the city council would ultimately be, potentially be in a position of reviewing that. So that, it would not work in that situation. It wouldn't be an issue with the planning commission because the planning commission doesn't have a function in the mobile home rent control.
So we could never be that body then?
Not under, not with a system that also has an appeal to the city council.
Okay.
So do you have a direction? Are we going to bring this back?
If you, I guess if you could narrow it a little bit, that would be helpful. But whether it's the planning commission or...
So my recommendation was that we ask planning commission. I don't know, I wouldn't mind giving them a stipend if they want to sit through it. I'm okay with that. In the end, if it requires the city council to sit through it, I'll take that responsibility.
I think we should definitely offer a stipend to the commissioners for the work that they're going to do or that they do. And I think we should appoint John Chu. That gives us three and that narrows it down. We just got, maybe give me a couple more days so I could try to find a couple more. Although it's not my job to appoint more than one, but I can, I've been doing it for eight years trying to find somebody, so I could try some more.
Just for clarification, if we point John Chu, we're sticking with the old system.
For now, until we...
Is that what we want to do, appoint him now and then change it in the future?
No, not necessarily. I'm not making that motion. I think the idea of paying a stipend is a great idea and I think asking the planning commissioners if they'd like to serve on that commission would be okay, too.
I think that route we could look at. Planning commission is also a body that meets on a regular basis. They're accustomed to the hearing process and I think that would be a better option if we're told to do that. We could, I guess, go to the planning. We'll figure that out.
Do we want to then just use five of the planning commissioners for that function then?
I think there's seven.
There's seven of them, so.
No, but, all seven?
It's the planning commission, I...
Okay. That's an all-day gig, though. That's going to be, it might be tough for them. It can be an all-day job.
So we're going to hang off on appointing John Chu and then we're going to look at the planning commission? And then a second op, do we need to give you a second option? Or is that the only option?
We could go to the planning commission to see if they would be interested in serving. And if they are not, then we would come back to council seeking further direction.
Well, my second option is that we take on the responsibilities. I know David's not a big fan of that, but in the end, we have to do something, so.
May I also suggest that if, if the commissioners don't want to participate and we have somebody who's already volunteered, Mr. Chu, I think we might lose an asset. So I would suggest that we appoint him as an interim position or offer that up with the understanding that it may only be a couple of months or maybe for however long he wants to be on the Rent Stabilization Commission. But have that in our pocket, so in case it falls, goes south with the planning commission, at least we have three people now that are committed to the Rent Stabilization Commission and there's a voting body right there.
If I may, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, does that make sense? I mean, it makes sense to me, but maybe there's holes in there.
I think the chances of the planning commission, all seven planning commission members saying, "Yeah, we'd love to do that," is fairly unlikely. I wonder if that's, if that's the direction. I think that's probably the answer. And so that takes us perhaps, if we're wanting to appoint, if you're wanting to appoint John Chu, and I give John all kinds of credit for volunteering. I'm wondering if we're back to the hybrid model where direction from council is that, you know, two planning commissioners are selected to be on the committee and we change the enabling documents to reflect that, just as a thought.
With a stipend at this point?
With a stipend.
With a stipend. I think that'll, that'll be the...
Does it have to be the same planning commissioners? I mean, these are gentlemen who, or ladies and gentlemen who haven't, you know, stepped up to take on this burden. And we're kind of, we're tapping them for that, so pinch hitters, if you will. We need you for this hearing or this item.
Or rotate through every...
Draw short straws. Who's going to be able to step up on this one?
Well, the one issue with that is the complexity of the ordinance and the rules. And so their ability to be trained and catch up, to have the knowledge if a hearing comes through and if that's constantly rotating. I mean, that's some of the issues that we've had with the commissioners is difficulty in understanding the documents, the Ukaypa code for mobile home rent stabilization program. So just a sit-in, it's difficult to ensure that they understand the documents. And typically, a commissioner has two years. They go through training and retraining if they ask it and then, you know, they're, they have greater knowledge of the documents that they're guided by.
So you'd recommend, say, a two-year rotation versus a one-year rotation, but not a pinch-hitting process? Whoever's not available draws a short straw.
Don't be absent.
Yeah.
I have a question.
All right, so we're going to have...
I have a question. So if you had a stipend for the two on the planning committee that were on there and you have the three volunteers, are they not getting a stipend either? So you've got, potentially, you've got half of them getting paid and the other half not.
That's the research we're going to do. We think we can provide a stipend for all five.
I think you'd have an easier time getting...
I think the only thing we're really clear on is that they should receive a stipend to incentivize them to be there.
Yeah.
That's one thing that's all, that's never been there. Is the fact that you're offering them some incentive, a little incentive.
So should by the time you come back to us, we find more interest from the community, then there's not a planning commission issue now? We just have a stipend for our five commissioners? Madam reporter, if the news bureau wants to help us spread the word, we'd love to have some applications come our way.
That would be preferable.
So now that we're as clear as mud, so... Are you good? Are you okay?
Is that a yes or no?
Yeah, I mean...
Are we going to, so do you want to make, let's make a motion. Do you want to, should we appoint Mr. Chu?
Yeah, I make the motion to appoint Mr. Chu to at least interim.
Okay. So we have a motion?
Wait, no. No, I'm sorry. In 2010, each council member, so councilmember Avila and Mayor Pro Tem Duncan have appointed somebody.
So now it's just somebody needs to appoint him besides...
Mayor Bog, Councilmember Thorpe, or Beaver should appoint Mr. Chu, no different than the other two that are currently serving.
So I'll mention to appoint him.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion?
No, I think that's just a done deal now.
A done deal?
Well, I still want.
Okay.
I still, let's do a vote.
All right, so let's, let's make a motion that Mr. Thorpe appoint John Chu to the rent control committee.
I'll second that motion.
Oh, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We've got this, we've got this. All right, so when it comes to potential changes, we're just going to offer a stipend to the commissioners?
Yes.
Perhaps still bring it, do we still want to bring it up to the planning commissioners?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Do we need to determine what the stipends shall be or a range? Or just you guys will come back to us with a suggested recommendation?
I can come back with a suggested recommendation and a resolution for you, you to approve.
Okay, I move then. Provide a stipend for the commission.
All right, so we have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm sorry, just for clar, so that's the full commission then? Yes, I'll be including commissioners and citizen volunteers.
So anyone that sits on the board?
Anyone sits on the board.
Okay. All right. That was painful. All right, so moving on to item number nine. So this is for Ray.
I'll be very brief, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the extension of the emergency, there are three reasons why we need to continue to extend the emergency. One is the item you heard earlier this evening, the NRCS grant funding. That is anticipated to be completed by August, but there are two other issues. There are outdoor dining operations now that are allowed because of the emergency declaration. Would not be allowed in their current configuration because they take up some of the parking area that was part of the original approvals. And. And the, there is also a church in the community that is using a space that isn't consistent with the zoning for that location and is conducting their operations outdoors with tents consistent with the emergency declaration and those enabling documents that allow for that. So that project, that property would have to go through a CUP and a general plan amendment to be approved ultimately. And so it's been allowed under its interim, in its interim condition as a result of the emergency declaration. So for those reasons, staff's recommending, recommending that we continue the, to extend the existence of a local emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the El Dorado fire. And happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, so are there any questions for staff? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so that takes us to item number 10, I believe this is Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is an item that includes a, an agreement with Vantage One Real Estate Investments for fill material, export material from the Wilson Three Basin Project to be used on their site. As you, I'm sure recall, the, their site is the Ucaipa Point Site near the freeway along Ucaipa Boulevard between 18th Street and Avenue E. It includes the, in fact, I think we have some exhibits, right? It includes the, oh no, it's in the, it's in the stat, exhibits are in your staff report. It includes the Kaiser Facility, includes a number of restaurants and, and other potential uses that are still being explored. But they are in need of an additional 50,000 to 60,000 cubic yards. And with a project of the size of Wilson Three, 1.3, 1.4 million cubic yards. Obviously, the, it's unlikely that you're going to hit the number exact. And so we do have anticipated export at this time based on shrinkage and rock removals and all of that as a part of the 1.3 million cubic yards of grading. And so it's an opportunity for both parties to benefit. Would like to make one change, actually two recommendations in the, from the staff report. One is that the, my staff has indicated that $8 a cubic yard isn't enough under today's numbers, today's estimates. Would like to ask city council to increase that amount in the agreement from eight, $10 a cubic yard. And also would like some authorization for the city attorney and the city manager to effect non-substantive changes to the agreement. This is something that we have pulled together fairly quickly and their team is generally in agreement with the language that you have before you this evening. But there may be some non-substantive changes that we would like the authority to work through between the city manager, the city attorney and their team. Generally speaking, the dirt is going from the Wilson Three Basin Project at, near Second Street and Oakland Road to that location along the freeway that I mentioned earlier. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from you this evening.
All right, so are there any questions for staff?
What's the new cost to us then? Because it's, right now it's $400,000 based on what, $8 per cubic yard?
Correct, it would be 500,000 total and our cost would still be 50%.
So, oh, okay, so it's 250 and there is enough in the budget to cover that?
There is, and there's also an option afforded us with the use of credits for the dirt agreement that we already have for the site when it was owned by others. And so our share could be covered from the credits, from credits associated with that dirt agreement from previous owners.
How much, how many credits do we have?
There's over a million in dirt cost that is owed the city and utility, dry utility undergrounding. But I think the dirt alone is over a million, right around a million. And so there's adequate funding there.
No impact to us, really?
Under that scenario, yes.
All right, so any other questions, comments?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
That was as amended?
As, as amended, I'm sorry, yes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so that takes us to the next item, item number 11, looks like this is Todd.
I mean, he's going to start us off.
Okay.
Yes, I'll, I'll start this off, Mr. Mayor and council members. This item is for a left turn phasing traffic signal modification at various location projects. As part of the city's traffic calling program several years ago and also with the input that was received from the police department during our monthly traffic meetings in 2018, staff began the process of reviewing the left turn phasing that signalized intersections throughout the city. Currently, the traffic signals in Ucaipa have three types of left turn phasing, protected left turn, a permissive left turn or a combination protected permissive left turn. As part of that review, and after considering the number of traffic accidents, traffic volume and also the posted speed limits on the street approaches to these signalized intersections, the city contracted with a traffic engineering consultant to complete a left turn phasing warrant analysis at six signalized intersections. The results of that analysis served as a basis for the warrant for modifying the left turn phasing at six of these intersections. And it also served as a basis for the traffic signal modification plans. The analysis was also included in the grant application that the city submitted in December of last year requesting 350,400 from a, the Caltrans or the state's highway safety improvement program to complete the modifications. And at this time, I'd like to hand it off to Mr. Guchar to present additional information.
Thank you. Based on funding availability in the fiscal year 2021 capital improvement project, staff selected the intersection of Ucaipa Boulevard and Ucaipa Valley Circle, otherwise known as the Vaughan Shopping Center, for the first traffic signal to be modified under part of phase one. On February 18th, 2021, four bids were received for the traffic signal modification at the Vaughan Shopping Center. Coincidentally, on March 30th, 2021, staff was notified by Caltrans that the city's H ship grant in the amount of 300, 350,400 for the installation of the four remaining intersections was approved. The fifth intersection being Ucaipa Boulevard and Ucaipa Valley Circle and the sixth intersection being Oakland Road and Sunnyside Project, which is modification that will be completed as part of the Woodside Development Project. The grant funding the state only funds and will not require extensive and lengthy environmental reviews required by the grant funding. As a result of these actions, staff is requesting that city council, next slide. One, reject all bids due to the low bids exceeding the project, the, the project budget and direct staff to combine the signal modification, Ucaipa Boulevard and Ucaipa Valley Circle project with the left-hand turn traffic signal modification in various locations and re-advertise the bid as possibly, to possibly capitalize on the cost savings for the combined project. And two, amend the fiscal year 2021 CIP by adding the amount of 350,400 in H ship, H ship grant funds to the left-hand turn phasing traffic signal modification in various locations project for the total overall budget in the amount of 3, 435,400. This concludes report, staff's available for any questions.
All right, so are there any questions for staff? I'm going to assume that the reason why the, the one that was not granted, grant funding or was given grant funding is because it goes into private property?
It's, to serve my memory correct, it was because of one for Sunnyside and Oakland Road is being funded by the Woodside Development.
Well, there's one there that's for, that goes into the Vaughan's.
The Vaughan Shopping Center?
That doesn't.
At the, at the time in when we went, we had funding available from the, in the CIP to perform phase one of the, of the overall six, that was the first one in phase one. The timing at the time with the grant didn't overlap as well as we could, but due to COVID, the grant requirements and dates changed significantly. And therefore it just ended up that we went out to bid for phase one for Ucaipa Valley Circle. It came back over budget, then received grant notifications that we received the grant. So now we're going to try to rebid the project all five to see if we can get a better, better cost, better price on that.
Okay. Well, I think they're all needed, I think they're, it's a, it's a good thing that's taking place. John, do you have something?
No, I agree, I'm glad to see it happening.
David, you have anything?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion, do we accept?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so that takes us to, thanks Todd. To item number, is it number 12? Is this for me or Landon?
I will be presenting this item, Mr. Mayor. This item is for the, the second land conveyance and escrow agreement with the San Bernardino County Flood Control District for the Wilson Three Basin Project. As councils aware, the Wilson Three Basin Project is a, a very important and significant regional flood control project to reduce flood risk in Ucaipa and it also includes many other benefits. The, the project is being constructed by the city in phases and phase one is currently under construction. Consistent with the MOU between the city and flood control that was approved back in 2013, the proceeds from the sale of the surplus property to home builders would be the flood control district's financial contribution towards the construction of the basin project. You've seen this slide many times before. This slide represents the various parcels that make up the, the Oakland Creek, Oakland Creek specific plan area. Parcels A and J are the surplus property that is not required to build the flood control project, the Wilson Three Basin. In August of last year, city council approved the first land conveyance, conveyance agreement for parcel A. And then that parcel A, parcel A was then sold to Woodside Homes along with parcel C, which is the, the previous city hall or city yard site. That was sold to Woodside Homes for the, the 144 lot residential development project that all, that is also currently under construction. The proceeds of the sale are being used for the construction of the Wilson Three Basin for that contract. The agreement before you tonight is for parcel J, which is on the west side of the project site. Again, the, the agreement before, before you is for parcel J. The, this property is proposed to be transferred to the city from flood control. I do want to point out that a portion of the property to the south here at parcel E in blue, that will be retained by flood control for the purposes of the phase two Wilson Three Basin project improvements or the future channel improvements. This, the surplus property is approximately 7.8 acres and this will also be sold in the future to a home builder for a second residential development. And that, the proceeds of that sale would help fund phase two, the construction of phase two of the Wilson Three Basin Project. The agreement before you identifies the fair market, market value of this property to be in the amount of 1,371. The property is currently being used for access to the Wilson Creek Channel by the contractor and is also being used as a temporary stockpile area for soil and rock material that is being excavated for the project. Staff will return to council at a later date with a recommendation regarding the, the sale of this property to a home builder. At this time, there is no additional fiscal impact to the project budget associated with the proposed agreement. That concludes my report and the recommendation before you tonight is that city council approve and authorize the mayor to execute a second land conveyance and escrow agreement with county flood control for the conveyance of the district surplus property to the city for the Wilson Three Basin Project phase two improvements and authorize the city manager or is designated to administer the terms of the agreement. That concludes my report and staff is available for questions you may have.
All right, so are there any questions for staff?
I'm good.
So is there a motion to accept?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so. Moving on to item 13, is this Landon?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of council. This report is regarding the conservation services agreement for the recently constructed Fremont Street Low Water Crossing replacement project improvements and the associated environmental mitigation that goes along with that. On the screen before you here, I'll do a brief project overview and, and dive into the conservation services agreement. This project was for the construction, which is now complete of a new bridge structure, Culvert Bridge, which replaced what was before the project took place and at grade crossing that would temporarily be closed during storm events. And along with that bridge, there were street improvements and drainage improvements that went along with that as well as the, the grading upstream of the bridge to provide enhanced groundwater recharge opportunities as a part of the city's north bench water resources plan. And as we've seen firsthand this last year or so, how critical it is to construct and, and maintain these critical infrastructure access points open in all weather conditions, especially during the fire and, and other evacuations from risk for flooding. So we've seen it and put it into good use, protecting the water lines and other infrastructure that are in there as well. In order to construct these improvements, the regulatory permits were obtained from California Fish and Wildlife and the US Army Corps of Engineers because there were permanent construction impacts in the creek itself. These permits were issued by each of those agencies contingent upon the city complaining they required mitigation for. for permanent construction impacts. And that mitigation includes the restoration, enhancement, and permanent preservation of 6.8 acres of mitigation land. This 6.8 acres includes 2.4 acres of land to mitigate the impacts on-site, which is illustrated with this exhibit here. That's more of a short-term mitigation effort with the five-to-10-year performance criteria associated with it. And then on the next slide is the 4.4 acres of land to mitigate the impacts for that bridge project off-site. And that off-site location has been designated in the Oakland Creek Flood Corridor in this box in red here, just to the west of Pendleton Avenue and upstream of the Oakland Creek Basins. And that area is the off-site mitigation that is eventually going to be a conservation easement, a more long-term maintenance requirement associated with that permit. This required on- and off-site mitigation from the construction impacts is essentially one of two options that's available to the city and other agencies that do projects like this with these types of permits. The only other option really is, would be for the city to pay into a regional mitigation bank in lieu fee program, as is common practice with many other public agencies. Typically, this in lieu fee option costs between $270,000 to $350,000 per acre. The approach we've taken with this project and others like it is to mitigate within open space areas within the city of Yucapa, and the cost to do so is approximately $110,000 per acre, significantly less than that in lieu fee option I just referenced. This approach also has some other benefits to the local community. It provides open space and some passive recreational opportunities to residents in these areas. That 4.4 acres that's going to become a permanent construction easement is being orchestrated, and we're collaborating with other agencies to make sure that the trail network can still be maintained through that area while preserving that environmental, native plants and trees and other resources in that area. On slides three and four, we can pull those up here. These are some other illustrations of the landscaping and kind of the more ultimate condition once these areas are restored. In accordance with those agency permits that were obtained for construction, Habitat Mitigation and Monitoring Plan, the HMMP was approved for this project, and that goes into more detail about the requirements for the mitigation, identifying each of those specific criteria within those areas that needs to be obtained. As a part of tonight's recommendations included in this report, staff is recommending approval of the Conservation Services Agreement, which identifies payment to IERCD, the Inland Empire Resource Conservation District, in the amount of $244,156.94. That's for the 2.4-acre onsite mitigation area for the 10-year term, and also $218,571.39 for the 4.4-acre off-site mitigation area for the five-year term. On the next slide is the landscaping for that area. These fees reflect the IERCD's cost to perform the activities as outlined in this HMMP over the next five to 10 years. Also important to note that our partnership with the San Bernardino County Flood Control District on this project and others has allowed us to take this local approach. In the 2.4-acre onsite mitigation area, that is located on San Bernardino County Flood Control property. So our construction permit is actually a 10-year permit, and it allows us to work with IERCD to make those contributions to the environment and the mitigation efforts under that permit with the Flood Control District as they partner with us on this project. The city has also obtained $337,000 in Department of Water Resources grant funding for the Oakland Creek Flood Corridor Project, which is this larger area here. And this is where the mitigation will be in the off-site for this bridge project. Additionally, our partnership with the Flood Control was key, along with that grant funding, because properties in this corridor were purchased from Flood Control, as well as some private properties in order to accommodate the needs for the project and specifically this mitigation effort here. And partnerships like this just help us to keep the cost to mitigate locally in that lower range of about $110,000 per acre. Additionally, the city was able to fund a majority of the engineering and construction for this Fremont Low Water Crossing project with the Caltrans Highway Bridge Program funding, which is approximately 89% of that federal highway administration funding with that 11% local match. We took a little bit of a unique approach where we actually worked with Caltrans, and we applied for similar highway bridge program funding in order to fund the environmental mitigation work as well. And just last month, we heard back, and we were successful in that application for $664,000 in that grant funding with that same 11% local match that goes along with it, almost 90% federally funded. With the required local match being about $86,000 and the $664,000 of the Highway Bridge Program funding, that's a total of $750,000 for the costs associated with these required environmental mitigation efforts. And the recommendations in tonight's report include an amendment to the CIP to reflect that additional grant funding and adding that to the project. With that, staff is recommending that council approve the recommendations as identified in the report, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
So are there any questions for staff? Anything?
No, I'm good.
I'll move approval.
All right.
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. So that takes us to item 14? I believe this has been.
Well, I just want to confirm, Mark Hoffman, are you on the phone?
Mark, are you on the phone?
I think we have a gentleman here that wants to speak on this item too, but I'm not sure he came in late. I'm not sure he has the speaker slip filled out yet. That would be Mr. Singh sitting back there.
Mark, it sounds like you're muted on your end.
Are you there, Mark? Is this something that we could proceed and then you come in?
Carry on from, from here. So thank you all, Mayor and City Council members. Here to talk about, I think, everyone's favorite subject, which is how do we tackle our housing element update process? This is a study session to piggyback off prior study sessions that we've had, including one on January 27th, 2020, September 28th, 2020, and January 11th, 2021, to discuss kind of approaches that we will be tackling with as upcoming housing element cycle. Now, kind of a bit of context for everything is, you know, why are we here? What are we doing? Well, one, it is a state mandate, so the state does dictate that we update the housing element every eight years. But I think more importantly, based on a survey that was done to the community as well, is providing opportunities for housing in the community is important. Some of these survey findings, which garnered us essential responses from several hundred members of the community in the city of Yucapa. Key elements or concerns that the community does have is barriers pertaining to housing, is the cost of housing currently, and the supply. As part of it, as noted during our city's Economic Development Advisory Committee, is that there isn't subsequent or enough choices available, and those that have families are being pushed out. Where if you have kids that have graduated, you know, starting their careers, looking to move back to the home that they grew up in, they're unable to do so. Or alternatively, you have people that are looking for different types of housing based on their stage of life, either moving up to a larger home with a growing family, or alternatively, looking to downsize. The inventory and supply isn't there. Then as part of the survey results as well, over a third of the respondents said that there are not sufficient housing options that they can afford in the city. And then over a quarter said that they would not have housing options to recommend for friends or family that wanted to live in the community. And then as part of the survey, majority of respondents identified housing for low-income persons, neighborhoods, preservation, and housing availability are also key topics that is of concern from the community. And now, as part of this study session, kind of key couple of goals that we would like to do is one, review the city's housing cycle arena allocation now that it has been finalized through SCAG. Then analyze effectiveness of different strategies to address the arena, more specifically for the more affordable type of housing, since it has the most potential constraints for the delivery of those, and then receive comment and direction so that we can proceed and finalize a draft of the housing element and proceed with the state and city council reviews of that element. Now, as part of our background, as I noted, the reason why we're kind of here is because the state mandates that we do, it is state law to have a general plan that includes a adopted housing element consistent with state law, addresses the needs of all the residents of the city, including new and future, and then at all income. So we're planning essentially for providing housing options for the community at large, whether they're high-income earners or low-income earners, you know, whatever age they are in, is to make sure that we have a balanced strategy to meet those needs. And then as part of the housing element process, the big elephant in the room is the regional housing needs allocation arena, and it's the numbers set by the planning agency or SCAG on the number of units that we should plan for as part of that upcoming housing cycle. Now, as part of this, as we've discussed before, unique challenges is that the arena itself is almost double past periods, and it's made it very challenging, so we have to plan for a lot more houses. And then subsequently, to address, I guess, bad actors that cities were kind of making paper sites, the threshold to qualify those sites has reduced a lot, so we're trying to fit more houses. We have much more stringent requirements before. And essentially, the law or kind of the state's purpose is to make the process as streamlined or as painless for future development to occur. And then certainly, if the city fails to meet those requirements, then if we have a non-compliant housing element, it could result in some penalties to the city. Now, as part of the, I'm going to take this off, so it's a little bit louder. As part of the regional housing needs, SCAG has formally adopted a arena number of 2,866 units for the upcoming housing cycle with about 708 for the very low income, which is about $40,000 household income for a family of four. And it can range, certainly if you have more household members, and the income threshold is a little bit higher. If you have less, the threshold is less. Four and under three for low, 511 for moderate, and then 1,154 for above moderate. And as noted, really, the purpose of the arena is to provide a balanced housing strategy, addressing all the needs of every income that we're trying to provide for within the community. Certainly, the more affordable units are kind of the tougher ones to get nailed down, and so that's where the bulk of tonight's discussion will be. But as a council priority and as part of the housing element, is making sure that we're providing the balance of housing for everyone. And then there's kind of a couple of key things as part of how we plan for the arena. It isn't necessarily a construction mandate. The city isn't required to build the units themselves, but it is a planning mandate in that we have to set essentially this stage to facilitate the new development of housing. And it's kind of accomplished in a couple of different ways. One is demonstrate that approved and proposed projects will meet the arena, so it's kind of using our pipeline projects, identifying sites that are zoned at densities that have facilitated the type of affordability that's required, and then also identify sites that address kind of the unmet need. Now, as I noted, this isn't exactly a construction mandate. However, as part of the rules and requirements, the state does check on the progress towards arena every year as part of the annual progress report, such as the one that was presented at the last city council meeting. And so certainly, if we're falling short, the state is going to ask, what is the potential constraint doing that? Is it something just where it's market concerns? Or is there some sort of site feasibility where it's no longer a site that should be included as part of our housing element sites? Now, do you want to kind of note right now, we do have certainly a shortfall on the lower-income units on our current pipeline projects. We don't have any proposed projects in the moment or in the queue for affordable housing projects. Our moderate income projects are kind of a split. It seems to be we're close to that threshold. However, it is based on speculative prices on some of the condominium projects where they may actually exceed the above-income ranges. And then certainly, the above-moderate housing projects, we have quite a bit of those in the pipeline that help. And so the attachment map does kind of show where those pipeline projects are. The above-moderate itself is predominantly isolated to the north bench, so right now, as part of the pipeline projects, the above-moderate income ranges is through those projects. And then we have some of the other infill projects that are interior in the site that usually kind of help meet the moderate income. And then certainly, we do have the vacant areas already zoned for our city's 24-dwelling units per acre areas that allow for kind of that higher affordability type projects. Now, as part of our sites, kind of the easiest way to think of the different income categories is the density that's allowed or the product type that's there. So our single-family districts, so the RL and RS districts are kind of the above-moderate income ranges. Our moderate income range itself is within our multifamily typical land use districts. And then the lower-income sites are within our 20 to 24-dwelling units per acre that count towards that lower-income category. And so just kind of for reference, is some projects that are over kind of that threshold. So, you know, ideas of kind of the land use planning, higher-density projects can look very attractive, provide good amenities for affordable housing unit requirements, and certainly have progress from some of the earlier affordable housing projects that were built in the city as part of that. And so certainly, as part of a strategy is helping to promote higher-quality or higher caliber projects that still meet the affordability requirements. Now, as I noted, with above-moderate, we're pretty good because we do have a number of the pipeline projects, but certainly making sure that they can come to fruition will be kind of a necessary component as part of that delivery. And then really, the deficit that we need to discuss as part of tonight's action or study session is kind of that lower-income ranges and the best strategies to get there. So there's kind of a menu of different strategies that we have been working on based on prior city council direction. Essentially, it's providing that 1,138 units with a buffer as well for the city's RM and R24 districts. So essentially, allowing projects at over 20 DUs an acre is what we'll get there. As part of those strategies is mobile home park conversion, the Uptown Corridor District specific plan, the Freeway Corridor, the College Village District, the Empowerment Zone, Oakland Road, also utilizing accessory dwelling units, and then finally, commercial corridor, potentially allowing either mixed-use or residential uses along those commercial corridors. And then also, as part of, as I mentioned, this is a housing policy program, is also looking at different policies or implementation measures that we can do to help streamline the process and further encourage development to, or at least make the process a little bit easier for developers or anyone that has a property that wishes to do something with it. Now, as part of the first one, as I noted, is the mobile home park conversion process. As the city council may know, the city council had created the Mobile Home Park Three Overlay District as part of the 2016 General Plan, which specified the conversion of mobile home units to either a higher-density multifamily project or some sort of mixed-use project to essentially help encourage some of that older stock and the older, those older parts that are kind of beyond, I guess, rehabilitation to help facilitate a more appropriate affordable housing site for residents and providing that flexibility. As part of the general plan, there was seven parks that were identified in that overlay, totaling about 550 trailers. Now, as part of right now, the ordinance establishes a development opportunity reserve. And with that process in place, they can get a net increase of 278 units. However, it does require city council approval through that entire process, and so those units right now are still through a more discretionary review process. As part of the renit credit, kind of the different strategies. One of the challenges that we do have with this approach is that because it would involve the conversion and relocation of the existing residents, normally, HCD will view that as kind of a significant impediment for its development. So it's unlikely that we would see all seven parts go through that process in the eight-year planning cycle. However, we have received interest from some park owners about exploring that. So if we take a more conservative approach, perhaps one or two parts go through that process, then we may be able to yield about $100,000. then we may be able to yield about 100 units through that, so essentially taking a fraction of the overall capacity. However, for this process to actually work, or at least be counted as a viable strategy with the state, is one, we do probably need to remove, we do need to remove the development opportunity reserve and establish the base density of 20 to 24 rather than 16 per acre, and then with a kind of a architectural process to get to the higher yield. Second one is that we allow those uses by right, so rather than a discretionary review process, if we're trying to help encourage the redevelopment of those sites, is making the process more streamlined, where if you propose a project that meets these requirements per our code, then you're able to do it, and that can help streamline that process and further encourage it. And then, as I noted, HCD is monitoring the progress towards the RENA, and so certainly, if we go through half the cycle and no one submitted a project for that type of activity, then they may go, okay, it's unlikely to occur in the later half of the planning cycle. Other strategy that is in the menu is our Uptown Historic District and intensifying the area that to help meet the objective or the economic objectives for that area. Similar to the Mobile Home Park Overlay, right now, it has a base density of 16 dwelling units per acre that can go up to 24 with the development opportunity reserve. And so with this is perhaps we can capture some of those units by removing the development opportunity reserve, allowing the straight density of the 24 dwelling units per acre, and then also, similar to the Mobile Home Park, is allow the multiple family uses by right. The amendment to the specific plan would also need to occur early in the planning period. As part of HCD's criteria, as I mentioned, the thresholds that they use to qualify sites has become a lot more stringent, so if sites have existing development onsite, that creates a potential impediment, or if the sites are too small or too large, that creates another impediment. So based on kind of HCD's methodology, we have been able to assume about 50 units could be qualifying for this particular process. Certainly, other units may come in line, but it won't be anything substantial enough for us to qualify, at least in our planning process. And then certainly, council can always explore, as known in the staff report, other opportunities to further incentivize development in the Uptown and allow that kind of mixed-use walkable community, whether or not increased densities from there can be pursued as well in the future. Another strategy, or kind of the core strategy that the city has employed in the past, is our Freeway Corridor specific plan. It has been used in past housing cycles as a way to provide a broad range of housing needs itself. For the Freeway Corridor is a, you know, kind of the largest area of undeveloped land in the city, and so its specific plan itself promotes or encourages the future development of a number of residential units as well as commercial development. However, and so as part of the Freeway Corridor right now, we had used 960 units as part of the prior housing strategies. However, based on the updated state laws and what the thresholds are and the feasibility of new development, most of the sites within the Freeway Corridor specific plan are not going to be able to count in our current housing strategy, simply because a number of the interior areas of the specific plan require significant infrastructure development or also require other phased development projects to occur, so the commercial areas to happen in order to extend the infrastructure. And so based on the timeline of those activities to happen during the planning period is unlikely to occur. However, there are two sites in the city, Freeway Corridor specific plan, that are much more shovel-ready. They do have the sewer access there. There's more utilities close by, and they're not dependent upon other development to occur. And so with that, we're assuming perhaps up to 400 units could be credited and maintained, and then the other sites as part of our update to the Freeway Corridor specific plan and further policies that encourage development in that area in the future that they may come.
What area is that, Ben?
What?
What area are you talking about with the 400 units?
The 400 units would be essentially off Live Oak Canyon Road. There's a RM 24 site that's there, and then there's another parcel on Outer Highway 10 and 16th Street at that corner. So they're both currently zoned as the R24. There's another property in between that's behind a commercial area, and so that one is unlikely to occur. But the two that are off the existing street frontages and have some of the utilities already there, we're presuming that those are much more likely to occur, since the impediments or construction timeline and critical path items in order to see the other sites come online isn't present with these, and so we're going to propose carrying along those and then anticipating that in future housing cycles, the rest or the remainder of the Freeway Corridor specific plan can come online for those actions in the future. Another one is the College Village Overlay District, which was designed and developed through Grant Fund Project a number of years ago, served as a catalyst for development kind of near Crafton Hills College. City Council may know, the College Village Overlay itself was adopted as part of the general plan. Number of study sessions had occurred as part of the development of that overall kind of vision. However, when it went to city council for formal adoption, it was deferred to work with the property owners and has not yet come back. And so in order to keep this site as a potential strategy, is that we would need to adopt the overlay district guidelines, which are mostly complete, before the housing element is to avoid some of the bureaucratic processes of having an implementation strategy for such a project. And then similar to the other affordable housing sites, is to establish a by-right process for the housing. So the capacity is 398 units, rounded up just for purposes of discretion, is already kind of established in the general plan. It would be just adopting the actual guidelines as expeditiously as possible and then creating it with a by-right process. Certainly, the College Village itself has had a number of different ideas or different markets that has been desired to be catered to by that project, including student or faculty housing. One of the components that we do need to make sure is whatever housing strategy we propose or encourage in that development meets the RENA qualifying. So student dormitories, for example, are not a RENA housing unit. They don't count towards affordable housing units, even though students that don't make money, make any money, live there, but certainly will want to be mindful of some of those provisions and whether or not built-in flexibility is required, then we can certainly tailor down the number anticipation of that as well. Another one was the Federal Opportunity Zone that was discussed at the last study session, and so council was supportive of that approach, as well as to allow for the upzoning of certain areas within that federal tax opportunity zone to help kind of align some of the incentives that are provided through that program with the city's development code. And so at the last study session, city council did support rezoning those sites, which would be able to accommodate about 150 moderate-income units and then 100 lower-income units. And so this would be something that's completed as part of a general plan update with the housing element update. Another one that city council has already reviewed and supported is the Oakland Road site. So subject site shows, or the subject slide shows, the city-owned property at Oakland Road and Avenue E. And so we would essentially rezone that particular site from institutional to the RM 24. And then south of that site is a prior housing element site that also provides affordable housing units. In an effort to help make these sites qualify better, as part of HCD's review, the city or city council did authorize staff to pursue our LEAP grant from the state to do infrastructure analysis or develop the infrastructure plans for the site, for this area, including Dunlap Park, and then the affordable housing sites, and then also to complete cultural resources work to help address some of the potential cultural resources on site. And so with those provisions, we'll be able to better articulate why these sites should be counted as affordable housing sites. And then certainly, with the city-owned property, we can control kind of the development of that site a lot more effectively, since we would be negotiating directly with the person buying it and then ultimately developing it. And then the site south of it, site south of it is already designated the R24, and so we would try and make sure that we claim credit for that site as part of this housing cycle, too, as a result of the efforts of our LEAP grant. Another strategy that can be pursued is accessory dwelling units. They're small-scale projects within, you know, individual properties, where a property owner, if they want to do it, can provide an ADU on their property, and it's a very incremental way to provide affordable housing units. Right now, as a base strategy, we're able to claim credit on, if we've had a 10 units or so in the past year, then we can assume kind of that same number. However, if city council would like to provide more permissive policies or more encouragement of the creation of ADUs, then we may be able to articulate a case for a more progressive number of units for the RENA. It won't be drastic, we can assume, you know, a five-fold increase, but certainly, we can go, if the number would be 80, perhaps we can get to 120, and that's a 50% increase based on strategies that we employ. And then the last potential strategy is utilizing the commercial corridor sites based on property owner interest and market demand. There are a number of commercial sites within the community, where the viability of them being developed for commercial uses is very limited, either through, either through, you know, lack of frontage. So the site that's listed on here behind the Yucapa Plaza has no commercial frontage along Yucapa Boulevard. It's accessed through the back, it's hidden behind, and you sort of, where you have a lot of trips. And so there are potential sites where the viability of being a significant economic driver for commercial uses isn't there, and so perhaps some of the residential uses where they don't need that frontage can be more viable. And then certainly, with the Yucapa Boulevard, infrastructure's already in place, and then there's connectivity to the transit system, and so there's a way to create some synergy through that, and either through rezoning particular sites or perhaps establishing a kind of a floating overlay where you have the development opportunity reserve. You allow a number of units to be built by right, and then they would be subject to the property owners seeking to do it. But as long as we set a easy process, that's by right, and really establish incentives for that to occur, then we may be able to do that as part of an overlay instead of rezoning the site specifically. And so with that, as part of these different kind of RENA options, it does, utilizing all of them, does get us to that kind of threshold with a buffer. One thing I do want to note, as part of the no-net loss provisions that were identified is essentially, if a project shows up, we anticipate, let's say, 100 affordable units. They build 80, then we are on the hook for finding another site that will make up that 20. Alternatively, if, you know, another project that comes in and they're proposing 100 moderate-income units rather than affordable units, then we have to make up the 100 units. And so we want to have a buffer just to build us enough flexibility that if we do get a project that falls short of the total numerical count of units that we were trying to get, but is otherwise a fantastic project or a great asset to the city, we can allow that income shift to go. So if, let's say, we have a site that ends up being built as moderate income, that may be fantastic, that helps us with meeting our moderate-income RENA goals, but we want to have enough buffer that we're not having to rezone a project every single time such an activity comes through. And so with that, that does kind of cover the different RENA strategies. And then certainly, in the agenda report as well, is a number of other strategies that can be employed to help facilitate the delivery of housing and affordability. So some of it is more by-right processes. Another is to allow more flexibility in our code to encourage housing projects that we do want, and maybe bypass some of the code requirements that may be antiquated in terms of getting kind of where the market is. An example is our multifamily districts and the moderate-income units, allowing, let's say, small lot subdivisions, where you have still a for-sale product, but you can bypass either going through a condominium that process, or even just as part of the single-family district requirements, where it has different land use sizes for one type of project, but then different for multifamily. We can streamline that process to make it a little bit easier. And then certainly, the last one also is exploring inclusionary zoning ordinance or inclusionary provisions to help also encourage or provide funding for future affordable housing projects as well. And so with that, that does conclude my presentation, but I'm happy to answer questions as part of the discussion, and hopefully, we'll keep moving.
Before we get into questions, I do have a speaker. I'm going to call you Mr. Singh. I'm not sure what your first name is, but I apologize. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Can you speak into the?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Charanjit Singh. I own a lot on Yucapa Boulevard. It's about one and a half acres. I've been thinking of developing it with some apartment units for a couple of years, but 12 units are right now permitted there to be built, and it's not really financially viable for someone to spend a lot of funds, the returns being not enough. So I'm here to, you know, support any change that the city can make to where more units are allowed per acre to make it financially viable.
So you're on Yucapa Boulevard, and what's the crest?
The lot is, it's a one and a half acre lot located between Best Lumber and Arco Gas Station.
Okay.
Right across from, almost right across from the Baptist Church.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so are there any questions or comments for staff at this point?
I would just like to say, in support of CJ, Mr. Singh's property, I'm not sure we understood exactly what he was saying there. He's got the property on the Boulevard between Arco and Fast Trip, and it goes all the way back to the back of the street there, and he's asking for a density increase like we did in the Uptown specific plan. And I think one of the things we need to consider is to extend the Uptown specific plan with that density bonus of 24 to the acre down to Fifth Street, or at least down to encompass his property, so that he can, he wants to build more than he's allowed to now, and that will certainly help us in some of these restrictions that we have.
Also, alternatively, you could use the Yucapa Corridor approach and accomplish the same thing with 24 to the acre density overlay, if you will, for that commercial zone along Yucapa Boulevard, which he is part of now. So either alternative.
So, right, is he 16 to the acre right now? Is that where his project? I know the project, I thought there was going to be a car wash there, but is that 16 to an acre, or is that 24 to acre right now?
So his property right now is currently zoned commercial, and you are correct, there was a car wash proposal that was entitled for that project in the past. The property itself, though, right now, if they were to pursue a way to do multifamily, they could rezone their site, carry it over from the existing RM 72C and extend it there, because he's on the borderline. And so that's probably where he's getting that density number reference, but right now, under.
What was that density? I didn't hear that number.
The density, so the RM districts allow for a multifamily project of 8.7 units per acre, or essentially one lot or one unit per 5,000 square feet. Or with the number in the bat, they could do a subdivision with single-family lots with 7,200 square feet, and then the other RM allows 10,000. So you have kind of a disparate number of units for one type and then a higher density for a multifamily, and so.
But just on the other side of Second Street, what is the density at this point? So in the specific plan?
So in the specific plan, it is the 16 dwelling units per acre.
16.
Extendable to 24 with the development opportunity reserve. And so as part of the strategy number two would be essentially removing that process and just allowing the existing unit yield to remain, but through a more simplified process.
And I think, I mean, obviously, the senior housing project on the Boulevard, that three-story facility there, that's a nice, a nice facility that has been maintained well. That's not undesirable, and down where he's at, if we had something like that, that was not necessarily senior housing, but had just regular housing like we have over at the Vons, near the Vons Shopping Center, that's what we're, well, that's what I'd like to see, is more projects like that that are market value rent, but I don't know where that fits into the whole low, medium lot or whatever. But that's what we need in order to accommodate some of these restrictions that this governor and the state legislature has placed on, or SCAG or whoever it is.
So what kind of help does that give us by moving the specific plan housing requirements all the way down to Fifth Street? Does that accommodate a number of properties, more than just Mr. Singh's place?
That would be, I'm sorry, that would be a portion of that line item eight there, the 250 potential additional development units, dwelling units, I'm sorry, along Yucapa Boulevard corridor, goes from Second Street all the way down the Boulevard. And so if you go from Second Street to Fifth Street, instead of Second Street all the way down the Boulevard, that number would be obviously a percentage of that. I don't know if you have an idea what that would be.
Oh, so that 250 is the entire?
The entire corridor.
That's assuming kind of a small portion. I mean, it can certainly go higher depending on how many sites we choose or if we do the development opportunity reserve. And looking through the aerial image, along the commercial corridor between Second and Fifth Street, there's not a lot of vacant commercial properties there. There may be some underutilized properties, but certain. There may be some underutilized properties, but certainly a lot more of the bulk of vacant land on the corridor is further south. And so the overlay with the, a numerical number or some sort of that would allow you to achieve the same goal and then provide a little bit more flexibility in some of the other properties that may be likely to see developed as residential units.
All right. So any thoughts? John, can I start with you or David?
I don't know yet.
Still, still pondering?
I'm still digesting this.
Okay. David, you have any options or ideas?
I, I like Mayor Protem Duncan's idea of expanding that and providing some opportunities where we can. We got to get what we need. And, and I was just thinking, it's kind of, it kind of fits the area because right around the corner, Third Street, we still have that senior center or senior development, which by the way, there's still another twenty-five, thirty units that are proposed. How's that coming along? Is that making progress?
I keep asking that question and I keep getting, it's right around the corner. So I'll ask that question again, but they say it's funded. They switched architects. The architect is finishing the design and getting ready to go. So it's taken longer than any of us thought, but yeah, it's, it's getting close.
Yeah, but so it's kind of in the neighborhood, so it's kind of like its own, you know, it's, it would fit in my mind. So I like your idea, Bobby.
And you know, I just drove through Brea on Brea Boulevard near Imperial and, and they've really done a good job there. And that's kind of what we're looking for in the Uptown, but extending that down, if it's done right, getting some market value apartments in there, I think that would really, really make it nice, make it look a little bit like Brea, but you know, have its own Ukippa accent or flair, I think is a great idea.
Are the proposals to go so much, just, are we, do you want to go beyond Fifth Street or do you want to just take it all the way down to Hampton?
If we stop at Fifth, you're probably twenty-five or thirty units, I would guess.
It would say it'd be more limited and then if I may suggest the overlay or kind of establishing it specifically for the commercial corridor would be, I think, an easier implementation rather than going through a complete specific plan amendment and then extending the boundary and doing a separate environmental review. With some of the commercial corridors, because of the land use intensity, we're thinking that a commercial development based on what's allowed versus the residential will be very comparable. So it may be easier for us to implement and have it in place within the statutory requirements of HCD for the implementation strategy, but it would still achieve the same outcome.
Justin, you have any, any thoughts?
So if I, if I'm understanding this correctly, and then forgive me, I, I don't have my glasses with me, so the numbers above subtotal, those are in the pipe, those are what we anticipate having, we could present to the state as anticipated builds? Is that what you're?
These are specifically for the affordable housing units. When I go to the pipeline project list, it is this one right here. So we have, let's say, for the above moderate, the fourteen hundreds, that's, as noted, most of those are the north bench properties. And then the moderate income is a number of the, either smaller apartment projects, some of the duplexes that Wayne Simmons has built as an example, as well as some of the condominiums, assuming that the income or the for sale rates qualify and may be more above moderate depending on what the ultimate sale price is. And then as noted, the pipeline projects for the lower income is, is pretty limited. And so that would include the, the Horizon Senior Housing Project, the twenty-seven that's, that's allowed for that. And then another project site that I'm blanking on at the moment, so.
If we approve the overlay down to Hampton, then we can anticipate that zero for vacant sites, vacant sites would, that would increase, right? We can anticipate there's a certain amount of vacant sites that could potentially be developed along the Boulevard.
Yeah, it would increase that and could be absent other strategies faltering, so like the mobile home park conversion, it would make up that buffer for that strategy.
What, what does that look like? I mean, you've got, I saw four, family of four making forty thousand dollars a year. What kind of structure do you, do you build that they can actually afford? I mean, that's, that's almost like Section Eight housing kind of a deal, isn't it or no?
Funding sources for that certainly do create certain challenges and so ways that we can help facilitate that or make the process easier for them to do it. Another alternative, as mentioned, was the inclusionary zoning. So you would have an in-loofy for the higher income staff to help kind of provide some funding for that. Or you have, as part of a project, they dedicate so many units for affordable units and then those become less amenitized, but then still integrate into, you know, above moderate income project to help kind of buffer that as well. So it's different ways to kind of help meet those needs, but certainly with affordable housing projects, funding is always going to be a challenge. And so providing enough flexibility for something to pencil out is, is part of the strategy that would be needed.
When we designated that about five years ago, six years ago, when we designated those areas along Oakland Road to the left as you're going toward the Ten Freeway and then at, at the corridor, the freeway corridor, there were some, I remember a lot of discussion or about a lot of apartments in there. Were those considered affordable?
Yeah, at that time, number one, it was all about zoning. It was all about creating twenty-four to the acre zoning in those locations that would make them eligible to be included in our housing element. It's gotten a little more complicated than that. The state now is going to be monitoring on an annual basis those are getting built and, and so that makes things just a little more complicated. But as Ben mentioned earlier, we believe with some effort, we can still get credit for four hundred of those units because we can demonstrate that they have access to transportation and utilities. We also think we can get credit for the property on Oakland Road that you're referring to, four hundred and some units there between Colorado and Avenue E along the east side of Oakland Road, I guess it would be. But only because, or maybe partly because, we have taken those steps. Council has approved using the LEAP funding to start the design of the infrastructure and trying to demonstrate that we are removing those impediments to development. Those are the, specifically in the state legislation about the housing elements, we have to demonstrate that why not, not, not any of the housing units in those housing element sites have been built during this eight-year cycle. And part of that is what are we doing to overcome those impediments? And so some of those will count, we believe, but what you're hearing tonight is some other options, some other opportunities, if you want to call it that, for, for us to meet the current requirements. As Ben mentioned also, the state requirement is double what it was last time around. And that's, every city is having difficulty meeting those numbers and, you know, we were kind of hopeful that, that would evolve and, and the state would reduce those numbers because lots of folks have said it's just almost impossible, maybe impossible to, to meet. So, but as it stands today, those are the numbers that have been approved by SCAG and, and we're stuck with, so.
And I do think as part of the overall strategy, as Ray mentioned, is, you know, addressing some of the impediments and constraints. And part of it's also looking at, you know, code provisions or other methods to make sure that we're not, I guess, impeding the ability for housing projects at all income levels or to be delivered. And so that includes strategies that we have or limitations on the above moderate as well as the affordable housing units. But certainly with HCD's criteria, the affordable housing units are the most challenging to get the credit you need for. But certainly we want to make sure or be mindful that providing that broad spectrum of housing products and income opportunities for the city is also there as well.
Part of this was options for infill development with areas throughout the city or is it still an option that we're able to present to the state as, that we've, that we've considered?
So as part of the, the federal empowerment zone, that's kind of the infill area, so that's along Third Street, a number of properties there that was reviewed at the last meeting for the affordable housing sites. And so the city would, based on that direction at the last meeting, continue with that, moving forward with those sites. And then certainly as part of policies, we can leave it more open and to help, I guess, encourage other sites once property owners are ready to go to do that, but without doing the analysis of every, every specific property in that case.
Also, I'm sorry, I'm remiss in not mentioning that Mark Hoffman has been listening to all of this and is available on Teams if he's still out there and answer questions.
Yes.
Yes.
Ben, can you go back to the, the options?
One, one way council may wish to proceed is, as you can see, we have more than is required, even beyond the fifteen percent buffer. You may wish to deprioritize the ones you like the least, I guess, in terms of, or tell us which ones you like the least.
So are we looking for a number of, our number is actually thirteen.
Thirteen is with the fifteen percent buffer. So we're, we're well over the requirement, so. And we did that on purpose. We wanted you to be able to pick from those choices and either eliminate ones altogether if you so choose or, you know, in some cases you may, College Village, for example, you could have some units, but not all the units. You could keep some of the units as strictly faculty or student. There may be some others that you can reduce the amount. Maybe the Ukippa corridor doesn't go all the way to the freeway. Maybe it only goes halfway to the freeway because most of those opportunities for converting commercial to residential are probably, you know, in that Fourteenth Street area, between Tenth and Fourteenth and that area, as well as the Uptown, near Uptown location that you heard about tonight. So, you know, you have some options available to you and maybe a, a, a way to proceed is to start eliminating options or reducing numbers and options.
And if I may, part of the, the purpose for this is to provide a little bit of access. So we did have a menu that you could slot, so it wasn't saying you must do everything and there's no choice in the matter. But I think more importantly too is also, you know, to allow some flexibility for council of, let's say, for the College Village. We don't want to paint all our AIDs in that one basket, but maybe assume, you know, a percentage of it, then we have that flexibility. And then two, also being cognizant that, you know, the fragility of some of these housing sites where, you know, if, let's say, the mobile home park conversion isn't substantially made progress through in the next couple of years, then essentially that whole unit credit strategy, we have to make up midway through the cycle. And so we just want to make sure that we're having enough of a buffer that if such a situation occurs or if another project comes through, that we're able to address it much more effectively versus scrambling to do another update to the housing element mid-cycle.
All right. So just to keep this thing moving, I'm going to go ahead and I'll just tell you where I'm at on each one of these. Is that okay? Does that work? So I'm, I'm okay with number one, two, three, four, I think we need to minimize a little bit. I'm okay with five, Oakland, I would like to minimize that a little. I could bring that down. And then accessory dwelling units, I, I'm okay with that. If you want to make it easier, is it, we haven't had that many applications, have we? You said ten?
So we've been seeing, I think, historically between ten and twelve per year since the ADU law came into effect in two thousand eighteen, but more interests is...
And then I, I would be, I would be fine with moving the corridor down to Fifth Street. I think that's a good idea, so that's where I'm at.
I, I would agree with that. I, I think, I think this accessory dwelling unit thing is a, is an untold secret. I mean, I know Ray and I have had conversations about a junior ADU or an ADU and a junior ADU, but, but there's, there's parcels out there where they could build, I mean, I don't want to get out of control here, but they could build three. They've got, there's, there's like three acre lots in, in certain parts of town where, you know, behind their house or beside their house, they could add three ADUs if they chose to and then provide family living or rent those out. I think that's an untapped secret in our city because there's a lot of big lots here that they could capitalize on. I think there's a potential for five, six hundred ADUs in Ukippa and that really wouldn't offset the look of our city that much if they were done right.
And if they've had three lots and split the lot, they could, they could do that. Other cities have even adopted four or five sets of plans, for example. They've been proactive in, in creating four or five plans that folks can pick from a shelf. If council wishes us, wishes that we be a little more proactive in that regard for ADUs, we can certainly do that.
Well, I think right now, let's go through the specifics on the study session, so for the housing element, not, not on one specific aspect, so. Justin, what's your, what's your?
Regarding the Uptown, real quick before I, because I'm actually pretty close with the mayor, but I do have a question. Regarding the Uptown, is this, would these fifty dwelling units potentially take place of a business that could be in the Uptown or is this, is this a lot that could be, could be something different?
So this is part of, I guess, the no net loss component is, let's say, one of the vacant sites that's listed. So there were three sites that were of large enough size to help qualify. If, let's say, someone did show up and did a commercial project and no residential at that unit, then we would essentially lose that. So as I mentioned, kind of the fragility of some of that is, is, you know, if those sites don't come to fruition, then we would lose those entire, that entire strategy. Certainly as a policy, we can maybe not, if council wishes not to count that as the affordable housing sites, but still move to a more permissive or by right process just to encourage new development, that can certainly be a strategy too without then assuming that we have to get those fifty units.
And you could have the mixed use where you have commercial on the bottom floor and residential in the second, thirds.
So I think I'm, I'm experiencing that now with some problems that are arising because of mixed use in an area where we have a music and arts festival right next door to somebody having with their, with their condo or their house or apartment. So I, I agree with the mayor on every item with the exception number two. I think we should try to focus on our Uptown, building it up in the way we have been, and I shouldn't say we, the councils have passed have been building it with shopping, eating, our music and arts festival, kind of an Uptown attraction area versus an area where there's actually residents or residential areas. That's, that's, I agree with the mayor on every other, every, every other item though. But number two, I think we should try to explore Uptown to be more commercial than residential.
David, you have anything?
Do you know, I, I do agree with you on a couple of things there. The College Village, I always anticipated and, and my vision was three hundred dwelling units, not, not up to four, but I think there was some financial concerns to make, to make that work, so that's why we have the upper, the four hundred number. Oakland, I agree with, with the mayor on that. For the Uptown housing, Bobby, my, my family lives in Brea. I know exactly what you're talking about. And there is a number of mixed use housing where you have the shops on the bottom and the houses on top. And for Brea, it's a wonderful, you should have, if you would have grew up in that area, you would have seen night and day. It's a beautiful, beautiful street and, and I agree with you, we should maybe try to do something like that, but in the Ukippa spirit, not, not the Brea. But everything else, I, I think accessory dwelling units, I don't know about that. That's just a, that's just a crap shoot. I mean, that shouldn't even be up there because you don't know what's going to happen.
All right. John, any, any thoughts?
You know, I think, after looking at this, I think I probably agree with you, with you the most, Mr. Mayor, with your approach with the numbers on there.
Okay. Good. Right. Does that give you a clear direction on where we're headed?
If I may, just ask a couple of questions. So I think I'm hearing consistency on the concurrence on the corridor housing just being between Second and Fifth Street. Is that, is that fair?
You know, I wouldn't mind going a little bit further because I, I think I agree with you, Ray, with that there's some opportunities farther down the street that we can take advantage of or developers can take advantage of and, and maybe get some more. Because I was just thinking about the open space along the Boulevard that, that can on both sides.
Yeah, and there's some deep, deep commercial, commercially zoned property there.
And, and, and it's actually a, a better use because we do have a lot of long, narrow lots going along the Boulevard. And we got to find better uses than that, you know, a car wash that goes off, you know, hundred feet wide and four hundred feet long. goes off, you know, 100 feet wide and 400 feet long.
Okay.
Oh, I was just trying to get to a concurrence on that one. I think there's still a disagreement.
So you're talking about, you were actually saying, Greg said, Mayor Boggs said, extend it to 5th Street, but you're saying go all the way down to where?
Well, the corridor proposal that suggests that we could generate 250 units goes down to, let's say, Sand Canyon, maybe to 16th Street, because there's some area there that on the, on the other side of the road from College Village that might also qualify for that. But that's really a policy decision. It's up to you five folks, how far you want to go with that.
Well, you know, there's a, there's a big parcel right there near Carpet Station on the left-hand side of the Boulevard that was sold about a year and a half ago. That's a pretty good sized piece of land. I don't know what, that's commercial, right?
Yeah, I think it is.
I think we should extend it. If we, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want it to look, I don't want it to be all apartments up and down the Boulevard, but I think we should extend it down and give folks the opportunity to do something nice in apartments or multi-use facilities where you've got a bottom level that's commercial, and then two levels up that's apartments, and then go back with it as far as they, their property will allow them to.
I think there's some opportunity there and with some creative design, instead of fronting on Ucaipa Boulevard, they might use the next street, you know, the 10th Street or 12th Street or something like that. And that way, it'll provide for better in and out of the complex rather than, you know, say at 12th where there's, where you really, there's no light, or is there a light there at 12th? Maybe at, we'll say at 10th, there's no light there. So how do you get in and out, you know? So provide another.
Well, this is just a study session. So you're going to come back with definitive numbers on the corridor? Are we supposed to decide right now?
We'd like to take, glad you asked that question. We'd like to take the input we get today and go ahead and put together a draft housing element document. Happy to bring that back to council for final approval before we go to, before we submit it to the state for review, if that's the direction tonight.
I'm okay with taking it down to Sand Canyon, I guess. It's fine. You guys okay with that?
I'm okay.
Yeah, I think it's okay.
You okay with that?
If I may, then ask the other questions. We'll go from 2nd to Sand Canyon. The Oakland, 550 is too many in the housing element. I think the one site is about 450. I think the city-owned site is 150 to 180, depending on the yield. That hasn't been, hasn't been a definitive design down there. Can we say something like 450 total? Is that?
What's the minimum square footage for that kind of number?
Minimum square footage of the.
For the dwellings, or unless you're talking about?
It's the normal apartment criteria that we would have. It meets the citywide design standards, which are pretty, pretty strong.
If I may, so the existing R24, RM24 site has a yield for planning purposes of 400 units. And then the city-owned property, we've assumed 150 based on the net developable area. However, through the cultural resources or the consultation project, it may reduce down if there's certain discoveries found that limit a portion of the site from being developed as well. So it may be less than the 550 as a result of the cultural resource analysis.
So it takes, takes us back to the 450, 450 number? Is that reasonable?
I think so, then.
I'm not excited about any of the numbers. I don't like any of them, but I'm just learning to accept it. That's why I said the least favorite of the, of the bad choices. And then the College Village hearing to stay on the bottom end of that 200 to 400 range. So 200, is that reasonable or is that?
Yeah, didn't you say you were at 300, David?
I remember 300.
But if we make the 200 of the 396 by right, all the things that Ben mentioned, by right, that, you know, 24 to the acre by right, and the other 196, if they ever get built, would be student housing, faculty housing, all of this current criteria that is in the College Village plan. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, if we could come up with a ladder truck, about a million five for a ladder truck, we could go a little higher at that College Village, but I'm not going to hold my breath on that.
We may be, we may be ending up there anyway with the hotel sites.
And then if I may, then the College Village will be bringing back to you before the adoption of the housing element in order for those units to count. So stay tuned for that.
And so the other three are okay the way they are, I think.
Well, is that going to take us to the lower threshold? I'm more interested in going to the lower threshold of that 15% buffer, so.
Right, absolutely.
I'm not interested in giving more than we need to.
No more than 50%, that's another good question. No more than 15% above the actual number.
Correct.
Agreed, understood. I think we have clear direction. And we'll adjust the numbers a little bit if we have to to make sure it's just 15% over the SCAG number.
And all of this is just on paper as of right now, remaining hopefully optimistic that our objections with the letters and et cetera, that we've joined on with the coalitions of California cities, will do some kind of, have some kind of impact on the legislature in Sacramento.
And just that the statewide number is obscenely high. I'm with you. And just for the record, inclusionary zoning, which basically requires a certain percentage of any project be affordable, or an in lieu fee be paid for any project, residential project in the community, that's not something that you would like to see in the draft housing element. I take it based on conversation this evening. Or do you need more information on that?
I'll need more information.
As kind of a final, two points, as part of the housing policies, would you like us to include in the draft element, policies in support of more streamlined processes for certain types of residential projects, and also exploring code amendments to allow a little bit more flexibility on some of the product types to kind of meet the market needs and also promote projects that the city finds desirable? Just want to confirm if that's approach, we can include those strategies as well.
So you're asking us to lessen the restrictions on some of the, I'm not following you here.
So one would be just more by right processes. So if they meet all the city code requirements, then it goes through that process as a little bit more streamlined. So it bypasses some of the sequel review, and then certainly with state law, avoiding some of the challenges of denying a project that otherwise meets the code. And then the other one is not necessarily lessening the requirements, but allowing, I think, more creative approaches for the development. So example is the small lot subdivision in lieu of condominium projects or something like that, where you have a little bit more flexibility to those type of products. Or certainly with even the higher density having code provisions that really encourage perhaps, or provide more specificity on those standards, so that they are, if they are by right, then there's more certainty on the outcomes for that process.
I'm not that interested in moving that way. I think we need to, if we're going to change to allow these numbers to come in, I think we need to be a little more, a little, have more oversight, not less. Unless I'm interpreting this the wrong way.
Yes, Mark.
May I ask a question of our consultant?
going on here. So just, just for clarification, so we may not get credit for the different sites if we don't lessen some of these requirements? Is that?
And if I may, the R24 sites, for those to count, they do have to be by right processes. The review streamline is, let's say, above moderate or moderate income stuff. Do we want to establish a threshold where, rather than right now under city code, if you're building five units, you have to go through a more lengthy review process, whether or not that gets extended up a little bit more so that more projects can be done more faster and efficiently than, than otherwise.
So then kind of by default, we have to accept these, these changes?
And that's actually the situation with the current housing element sites.
Right, okay. All right, so Ray, where are we at? Do we need, what else do you need at this point?
I think you've given us all that we need. I think the question that you asked raised some, you know, some clarification responses in terms of where we're at. And none of us, you know, are real happy about the direction that the state is taking us in this whole thing. But that's the only way to get a certified housing element. If we, if we want to get a certified housing element is meet these conditions. And our choice really is among these choices, these options, which ones are least palatable. And I think you've given us direction on that, up to and including, let's keep the number at no more than 15% buffer above the numbers that you've already given us direction on. So we'll make sure it's only 15% above the SCAG requirement.
Okay. All right. Then everyone good? Are we good at this point? You good? Are you awake?
And I assume we'll come back to you with a draft housing element for review before we submit to HCD, right?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. All right. So that takes us to announcements. Any announcements? Justin, do you have anything?
Just our Music and Arts Festival, May 7th and 8th, coming up.
All right. David, do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
John, you good?
No, sir.
All right. So it does take us to a closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got two items on closed session this evening. They're listed on the agenda, potential litigation, one where the council will consider potentially initiating litigation, and the other revolving, involving a potential exposure to litigation. We don't expect reportable action on either of those items this evening.
All right. We will now adjourn the city council meeting.